Apologies for keeping everybody waiting. I was over at the Second City and dashed over. Left a couple of minutes later than I should have. So, I'll now call the City of Urbana Council's Committee of the Whole to Order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
Okay, are there any additions, suggested additions to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to staff reports and we have a presentation on the Lehrman Neighborhood Needs Assessment.
Good evening. Aaron Bond is our planning intern, also project manager for this neighborhood needs assessment project, and he's gonna have a short presentation about the good work we've been doing in the Lehrman neighborhood.
Alright, so my name's Aaron for those of you who I haven't met so far, and I'll be presenting on the Lehrman Neighborhood Community Assessment, primarily talking about the pretext, the process, and then I'll touch a little bit, excuse me, on the findings and implications, kind of where to move with all the information that we have. So, the assessment was kind of born out of the situation in the Lehrman neighborhood. There were high vacancy rates in 2010, nearly twenty percent of the Lehrman neighborhood, or its block group that comprises the Lehrman neighborhood were vacant, recurring incidents of crime, redevelopment of Urbana Town Homes and Aspen Court, and there was also a strong resident initiative to improve the neighborhood. So, out of this, kind of came the need and the vision for a community assessment. So, just some things that were happening in terms of resident initiative to improve the neighborhood. Most of these things were either initiated or by or partnered with ELNAK, the Lehrman Neighborhood Action Committee. So, street light at, installation of a street light at a corner where there wasn't much any light. There was the Lenore Adams Fairlon multi-use path that was put in pretty recently. Neighborhood cleanup was a big thing, basically monthly residents got together and still are cleaning up the area. And one of the biggest things is the Lehrman Community Garden, which on a city-owned parcel, there's now, you can drive by in Washington, a flourishing garden managed by residents there. And Opportunities Board. So, those are some of the things that were happening before this assessment began in the Lehrman neighborhood. So, the vision for the assessment was birthed, as I said, by the Lehrman Neighborhood Action Committee, which met with a professor at the U of I and his class focused on generating ideas for survey tools to assess the Lehrman neighborhood, which kind of led to our beginning of initiating an assessment. So, the assessment looked at a number of things. We wanted to gather information on the experiences, assets, and needs of Lehrman residents. We wanted to gauge the efficacy of past and present city services and community development in the neighborhood and identify future opportunities for community development. And lastly, which kind of took, yeah, it was a major role in the entire assessment and a lot of success, bring residents and community members together in an effort to improve the quality of life in the neighborhood. So, there were three methods that were part of this assessment, the survey, open house, and planning charrette, and I'll touch on each of those. And this is just a basic overview of our process. So, we began in October and right around the same time as the Housing Authority and the city entered into an intergovernmental agreement to revitalize their Urbana Town Homes and Aspen Court sites. And so, we wanted to parallel that process with the assessment. So, we honed in on some different questions that we wanted to ask early on in November, and we had a pilot test with ELNAK, which led to the creation of our door-to-door survey, and we began administering that survey in November, and that lasted all the way through March. And so, in February and March, we had volunteer blitzes where volunteers from the university and just local organizations came together to administer the survey door-to-door in the neighborhood. And we had an open house, and then finally, we ended with a planning charrette where we looked at the different results of the survey and we came up with some strategic plans and interventions to address some of the needs and experiences that we heard. So, I'll first talk about the Lehrman Neighborhood Survey. So, the survey consisted of thirty-four questions. The topics were demographics, social environment, built environment, economy, and health. And we found, used three residential zones. Basically, we identified three different experiences in the neighborhood or smaller communities that existed. One was a predominantly rental and federally subsidized housing area, and the two and three were smaller communities that had more of a distinct experience and were more close-knit. So, we wanted basically to understand how the experiences in each of those zones compared to each other. So, the survey was informed and administered by a survey committee that was primarily made up of ELNAK community members, and we administered it door-to-door, online, at our open house, at the Aspen Court Management Office. And as I said, we had two volunteer survey blitzes, one on February twenty-second and March first, and we had over sixty volunteers from the community and the university show up to both of those. And overall, we collected a hundred and sixty household responses out of the six hundred and fourteen households in Lehrman, so which gave us about a twenty-six percent response rate. So, here's a picture of one of our survey blitzes. And the Lehrman Open House was basically a time for residents to discuss issues that were relevant in the neighborhood and connect with different representatives from local government and city departments. So, we had representatives from Urbana Fire Department to talk about the upcoming burn of the Urbana Town Homes and some different safety measures to keep in mind. We had members of the Planning Division to talk about the process of the intergovernmental agreement, redeveloping both of those sites in the neighborhood, Grants Management Division and Public Health, and members representing ELNAK as well. So, it was just a time to share different information and have dialogue about some of the issues happening in Lehrman. And we also had an opportunity to do some exercises and surveys that went into the assessment. So, here's a picture of some people presenting on some different things to residents. So, lastly, we ended with a planning charrette, and this was to generate a list of interventions to address some of the things that we heard throughout our time, throughout the process of the assessment. And for this charrette, we focused on five key aspects of what we were hearing, safety, housing maintenance, youth families, social opportunities, and well-being. And we had an opportunity for individuals to generate their own lists of interventions that they thought were relevant to the neighborhood. And then, we also had table work where we came together and selected a few out of our individual lists. So, overall, and this is a pretty brief list, but what we heard from the survey and throughout the assessment is safety and crime prevention was key in the area. Over the majority of each of the zones, mentioned safety and crime prevention as a key way to improve the area, and then also, we asked residents to rate their experience of safety in the neighborhood from one being the least and six being the most safe, and the majority of our residents came within two to three. So, I mentioned different things such as break-ins, drugs, different things that were kind of plaguing the neighborhood. Maintenance was another key aspect mentioned throughout the survey and the results as something that needs to be addressed for improving the neighborhood, and positive activities for youth. Another thing that we came across is a pretty noticeable discrepancy between Zone One, which I mentioned were more of the rental and federally subsidized communities, and Zone Two and Three. So, whereas Zone One was almost entirely disappointed with their access to opportunity services amenities such as parks, recreation, employment services, education, Zone Two and Three were fairly satisfied, and quality of housing, the same was true. Zone One was majorly disappointed or dissatisfied, whereas Zone Two and Three were fairly satisfied or satisfied, and satisfied with overall housing was, ran the same results. And then, low use of nearby facilities. So, across the board, residents either said barely used or never used facilities like the new path that was installed, or the Lehrman Community Garden, or the nearby parks, or Brookins facility in the neighborhood. So, here are just several implications for moving forward. What was key was definitely that this, the survey could be a tool for fostering relationships and public engagement. A lot of people were excited that their voices were being heard and their experiences were valued by the assessment process, sending notes of thank you or thanking volunteers who were coming door-to-door, and people wanted to know how they could get engaged in the process. And then, another thing that residents voiced was a need or a strong desire to become a part of the process that will be guiding the Aspen Court and Urbana Town Homes redevelopment. We got a lot, we didn't have particular questions that addressed that redevelopment, but a lot of people put in the margins or at the end of the survey that they would like to know more information or voice their opinions in the different events that we had as part of the assessment. And then, safety, whereas sometimes it came across as residents were concerned or had some type of worry about the individual issues happening to their home or their block. The issues in Urbana as far as safety were definitely community-wide, or, sorry, Lehrman neighborhood were community-wide. And these, it came up time and time again in our different events, the importance of resident communication, and just overall interconnectedness. And people mentioned interventions such as more community-related get-togethers or non-confrontational times for people to hang out and get to know each other as a means for creating a more safe environment in the neighborhood. And then, lastly, there's just the potential of using the survey as an ongoing iterative community process that not only engages residents but connects them to the processes of local government. So, we came up with a list of questions that we thought were relevant to the neighborhood and the experiences of residents, and these questions could be used as some type of baseline to basically gauge the success of different services or community development initiatives as different things develop in the neighborhood. And so, all of this can be found on the report. More details in terms of the process and the survey results can be found under Residents' tab online under Lehrman Neighborhood Community Assessment. So, that was kind of an overview of that assessment.
Are there questions from the council? Bill?
I just wanted to say thanks, Aaron. I think you've done a great job with that kind of response rate. I know you said a hundred and sixty households. Do you remember how many individual people that was?
It was, those were the individual respondents.
Oh, that was individual, okay.
Representing households.
Okay, I was thinking you might have gotten more than one from the households or something?
Oh, no, yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Further, yes, oh, yeah, Mr. Roberts.
I helped participate in some of the collecting of the data, and I saw the great turnout we had from students and organizations that went through the neighborhood, and it seemed to me, I have to agree, that people really were anxious to communicate their interests and needs. And I know that already, it has resulted in one section of the neighborhood in Number Three along Easy Street and along Washington Avenue on the east side of the neighborhood block have come together and formed a Neighborhood Watch program under the guidance of our police department, and that's like maybe the first real tangible result that has come from that, and it's already happened, but I'm sure there's gonna be some more developments, especially as the plans for the townhomes come up. So, I understand that you're off to new and wider venues of activity, and I wish you very well.
Thank you.
Mr. Smythe?
Aaron, yeah, thank you. You pointed to one recommendation, which is to make sure that we get good community input on the redevelopment of the Urbana Town Homes and that area. Dennis brings up another recommendation that's been put into action, I guess. So, are there, is there, are there a list of sort of short, medium, and long-term recommendations and things to do in the report itself?
There are, yeah. The interventions generated in our planning charrette are all in the report, and we both encourage long-term and just very short-term practical interventions. So, it kind of varied between the different groups that were there.
Okay, so, yeah, so you don't have a slide on summarizing some of those?
Oh, sorry. No, I don't have a slide, but it ran the, let's see. Yeah, it ran the gamut from very short-term practical solutions like cutting down bushes in front of your house or communicating with your neighbor in terms of keeping lights on while they're gone, to here is a comprehensive community development program for area, including business development, or engaging renters in a program promoting living, living like you own it. So, yeah, we had a range of different interventions that were generated, and the planning charrette was more or less more to get people thinking about what could, what could make an impact based on the different results we had.
Maybe the way to go forward here is, I know some council members have been fairly heavily involved with ELNAK. ELNAK gonna bring some recommendations to council or communicate with us, some of the, some of the things where the city can help. I mean, the gardens came out of that kind of interaction, other things there, so I'll try to take a look at the report, but another thought I had was maybe it would be good to summarize some of those things and distribute it to the neighborhood, work with ELNAK, and let's figure out what some of those next steps would be.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Yeah.
Diane?
Since so much of the property in Zone One is rental, do any of the recommendations focus on recommendations for landlords and doing things differently going forward in terms of property maintenance and management?
The interventions that were part of the Lehrman charrette did focus on, we had a number of residents from Zone One and with concerns about landlord keep-up and maintenance.
So, there's specific recommendations on the report?
I guess, one, as I mentioned, being proactive on the renter side, engaging renters in programs of kind of maintenance or living like you own it or different. There were recommendations for serious homeownership programs, kind of moving from rental to homeownership, but yeah, more of...
That still focuses on just the tenants, so it's a partnership there, so I'm curious about the other half of the partnership.
From the landlord side?
Yeah.
Yeah, not as much, as far as the interventions that were generated from the assessment. But, yeah, the assessment was more geared towards hearing the experiences and collecting information on those experiences, but we didn't hone in on, you know, and try to create a plan necessarily for moving on, but just a baseline for that planning process.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pressing?
Yeah, thank you very much. Was the idea of lowering the density discussed in these meetings?
It wasn't, no.
Okay, okay. Maybe that's something that could be discussed too, because that was something that was very popular when we went to the Southeast Urban Neighborhood Association.
Okay.
Any more, yes?
Yeah, I didn't bring my copy with me myself. It probably would have been great to have a couple of printed out and shared here on the council, but the report has a lot of data in it. There are graphs, bar graphs, and there's circle graphs, so there's a lot of information available as far as like the breakdown of responses, the kinds of, the number, you know, the percentage of people who had concern about one thing or another thing or how they rated them. So, there's some really good basic data that can be drawn from this survey.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
So, we'll now move on to discussion of proposed traffic signals at Windsor Road and Race Street.
Good evening, thank you. Several months ago, we embarked on the design for the Windsor Road reconstruction between Race Street and Fallow Road, and along with that design process, we thought we'd take the opportunity to look at the Race Street and Windsor intersection to see, confirm, reconfirm if traffic signals would be warranted or not, and so, we took the opportunity, while we had a consultant looking at this, to go into that study aspect, and tonight, you have before you the primary results of that, and Craig Schonklager is gonna discuss with you the traffic signals and their pros and cons at Race and Windsor.
Well, you have the staff report in front of you. As we know, Windsor Road is a major east-west corridor on the south edge of the city. Within the capital improvement plan annually since 2005, signals have been anticipated, and in 2001, there was a roundabout study done, and at that time, a roundabout was basically determined not to be feasible at this location. As Bill indicated, when we hired Hanson engineers to look at the corridor to come up with, you know, a new pavement, so to speak, we took the opportunity to reinvestigate the signal warrants at that location. Just a little background on signal warrants, the installation of traffic signals is governed by the Federal Highway Administration's Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which otherwise known as the MUTCD. In essence, there are nine warrants that a signal, an intersection would have to meet at least one of those warrants to justify a traffic signal. Those nine warrants pretty much are basically vehicular volume, peak hour volume, pedestrian volume, school crossing, you know, if it's close to a school, a coordinated signal system, crash experience, roadway network, intersection near a grade crossing. In this situation here, the consultant determined that today, the intersection does warrant traffic signals based upon the, what are known as the eight-hour vehicular count and the four-hour vehicular count warrants. They also looked at crash analysis for the last five years that were supplied by the Urbana Police Department and the Illinois Department of Transportation. I'll just read briefly here that they found few injury crashes in the project corridor. They did find a relatively high number of crashes occurring at the Windsor Road and Race Street intersection that they attributed to failure to yield right-of-way or improper lane usage, which are typically associated with always stop control intersections. They did state that a traffic signal should lower the occurrence of this type of intersection. Before you tonight, we have option one, which is do nothing, basically keep it the way it is. Option two would be to basically install the traffic signals with the proposed project. I won't go through the pros and cons, they're all listed here, but in essence, what we have today is, you know, an intersection that, for the most part today, operates in an adequate manner, meaning that we do have some backups on Windsor, but, you know, during off-peak, most motors can get through during the peak hours, basically when commuters are going home or arriving in the morning. You know, we do have some backups along Windsor Road. With the installation of traffic signals, what you would see is a more orderly traffic flow. You would see basically a consistent traffic control device situation from High Cross all the way over to into Champaign, which we currently do not have now. Another additional pro is that, we didn't mention in here, is that with traffic signals, you can install, and we do install, emergency vehicle preemption devices, which then allow ambulances to access the green through that intersection. The drawbacks, quite frankly, are an increase typically in rear-end accidents, and usually, most engineers are willing to trade that off with a decrease in the more severe angle or turning accidents. Currently, too, with the stopway, all-stop control situation out there now, we do not have anything that aids pedestrians to walk across, particularly Windsor, and the disabled right now. With the installation of the traffic control signals, we would put in accessible pedestrian signals, which means we would have audible and visual cues for the disabled. As far as the fiscal impacts, we are proposing that the cost of the signals, which is estimated about $205,000, come out of the local share of the bond for this project, which would be about $25,000 annually of the $320,000 that's projected for this bond. Based upon Hanson, our consulting engineers' recommendation, and upon review of the information by city staff, we are recommending that traffic signals be installed at the Windsor Road and Race Street intersection.
Now, I do have one member of the public who wanted to comment, I believe, at the time or now, is, it's, I believe Reverend Gary Grogan? Yes. So, would you like to make comment now or ask for, or listen to the city council questions and then make comment?
Now would be fine.
Okay, so it's Reverend Gary Grogan, representing Stone Creek Church.
I could just add one more attribute to traffic signals is, is that they are programmed and can be timed to meet the peak demand volumes of traffic in any and all directions. and can be timed to meet the peak demand volumes of traffic in any and all directions. So, if there's high volumes of traffic, for example, on a Sunday morning, that can be green timed such to allow large volumes of traffic to travel through an intersection, vice versa, whether it's a north-south, east-west movement. So, I just wanted you all to be aware of that.
Okay. Okay, Reverend Grogan? So, please state your name and your address. Is this the church address or your-
Church address.
Okay, I think that's mine.
Gary Grogan, pastor at Stone Creek Church, 2502 South Race Street, Urbana. Do you want me to tell you the service times? Just kidding.
Well, probably you should, yes, probably if this moves forward, you should definitely tell Public Works the service times, yes.
Okay. Read this in the paper yesterday. Do not go to the city website as much as I should. Thanks to all the public servants who make Urbana a great place to live. Diane Marlin, our ward person, councilwoman, she's great to work with. We've done a lot of things together, appreciate it. I know so many of you, I could say bad things about the chief of police, but I won't. I'm just kidding, just kidding. Trying to get some life in here.
We resist that.
We have all of our elders with, I have all of our elders with us tonight. Won't take time to introduce all of them, plus our business administrator. And we really don't know how we feel about this, because we're just getting the information. We just printed this offline today. Part of me really likes the idea of a signal, because I spoke with Craig today, and he was nice to speak to, gave me a lot of time. I really like the safety part for the pedestrians and all that. Like Charlie, I ride my bike a lot, and it is a difficult intersection to cross on a bike. The other part of me, and I can't speak for all my elder council or deacon council at this time, it's going to be a real problem for us on Sundays. We already have a major problem. Highs and lows together, the church runs 1544 last year. We're really maximizing our facility. And our philosophy is a little bit different than a lot of larger churches. We give away a minimum of 25% of our income. Last year, we gave away over a quarter of a million dollars, and a lot of that right here to help in the East Urbana area. So, if the light is red, people are not going to be able to get out of the parking lot, which they can't do already. If the light is green, they're not going to be able to get out of the parking lot if there's a lot of traffic. Most people only see a church as something that gathers on Sunday morning. We have almost 30 employees. There are people in and out of there, meeting with people all times of the week, on and on it goes. We are there every single day, almost every single night of the week. And I would just ask, and Craig and I recommended it, and Craig's going to come out and talk to us and prepare something and show it to our deacons, and probably we'll just have a joint meeting with our elders to help us to really understand this, because we, as of now, we really see it as a problem on Sunday mornings. And that takes me to something that I've requested before that we were denied, and I would just ask that you look at it again. We know that Windsor is a minor arterial street, and we would be willing to take care of all the cost if we could have a way in and out of our parking lot on the easternmost section of our parking lot onto Windsor. Pay to move the power pole, a lane that you pull in to exit off of. We would only use it on Sunday mornings. We would make a real attractive something out there, gate, like at a golf course or something. I don't know, only use it on Sunday mornings. If people are to get in, they could only come from the east and go west and turn into the parking lot, and we could have a little divider there, and to get out, they could only turn to the west. The city did have a company come and study, and they concluded that we did not merit a road or an artery out onto Windsor. But, they only came once, and they came on a down Sunday. In the church world, you have what's called the law of the two humpback camel. Things go up in the spring and down in the summer, and up in the fall and down in the winter. And they came at one of those down camel hump times.
You have one minute, pastor.
One minute, okay. Thank you. Well, I'll just wrap it up there. So, we're not exactly sure-
I'll move for additional time if you need it.
Pardon?
I'll move for additional time if you need it.
Oh, okay, thank you, Michael. So, we're not sure exactly how we feel about the light. We need some more information. Initially, we're very nervous about Sunday mornings, very, very nervous about it. And then, we're just making appeal, if you would look one more time at helping us. And again, we would make it attractive. I think our sign looks better than the university sign, just saying. And we would make it look real attractive, only use it on Sunday morning, be as amenable as we can. We would pay for all of that. Now is the time to do it if we ever have a hope or chance of doing it. So, nothing really prepared, just shared my heart a little bit, and again, thanking for your public service.
Thank you. Are any council questions for Reverend Grogan? Yes, Diane?
So, Bill Gray just mentioned that the timing on these lights could be changed to accommodate a lot of people going south out of the church on Sunday morning. Do you think that would help?
I must have missed that, Bill, I didn't catch that.
Or did I, did I hear that right? Okay. Yeah, so if there's an unusually big bulge of people heading south on Race, which typically you don't find during the rest of the week.
Yeah, that makes sense. I think we're reasonable people. I think once Craig works on this a little bit, he asked me some good questions on the phone today. You know, we can look at that, no problem at all.
Okay.
Other questions? Carol, can you take the chair for a moment so I can ask a question? And this is really a question for Bill, but relevant to what you've just said. Bill, would we consider, and would it help this situation, if in the timing of the lights on Sunday morning, there was a brief period where nobody could go in any direction? So, that the problem of not being able to go on the red and not being able to go on the green could be dealt with in that fashion?
I guess I'm not totally sure what you're asking, but if it was a southbound green ball only or left green, yes, that's possible. I think what has already been suggested by the reverend and with staff, I think, and will help with the consultant, we'll be able to look at their high-peak Sunday morning trips that are generated. And I think something could be worked out with their driveway situation with the signal. I would venture that it would improve rather than make things worse than what is there now. Almost close to a traffic cop out there at Race and Windsor, so.
Free doughnuts and coffee. You know, when you have an average of 1,500, that means that sometimes you have 2,000 people there. And then, high times Christmas and Easter, 3,000. So, it's a very small system of getting people in and out, and it's just not working. I mean, we have people directing the traffic every single week, and it's probably they shouldn't do this, but they sometimes go out into the street and stop the traffic. You know, I would just invite you to come, Bill and Craig. You don't have to listen to a sermon, but if you would just come outside. Of course, you know, the students are gone now. We're down 350 people, but still, if you came between 10:15 and 10:45, you would discover how congested it is. It is majorly congested. One other concern that we have is during the construction, and Craig looked at this a little bit, and I kind of panicked, because he said we might have to shut down the two lanes to the south, and that would only leave us the one small entry to the north. That would be virtually impossible. There would be no way to have two lanes of traffic there. It really wasn't meant to be used by everybody anyhow. There's just two handicap spots there. That's what it was meant to be used for. So, when it comes time for that to happen, if it happens, you know, we'll work with you, you work with us, and we'll live happily ever after.
Yes, Carol?
Bill, I just wanted to ask, Pastor Grogan just mentioned the additional exit on the east side. Would that be something you could look at? Why are you working on Windsor Road?
That's been studied in the past by a consulting engineer that was hired by the-
Do we need another one to do that?
I don't think anything has changed too much since that point in time, but we could take a look at it. The problem is, is Windsor Road is an access controlled roadway, and that's the primary reason why there's-
I don't know what that means.
Well, we allow public street access points to Windsor Road, and by definition, at every quarter-mile point. So, we buy various access policies. We don't want to encourage private driveway connections to the roadway for operational and safety reasons.
I always wondered why there was only one way in that church.
Our request is farther back, excuse me, than Myers. We had a architect that you all know well come and measure the entry and exit in Myers, and ours is much farther back. And I would ask that we revisit it again, if that's possible. And I understand it being a minor arterial road and all of that. And I would say to you, Bill, I owe you an apology. That letter that was sent to you was written by my previous executive pastor, and my name was signed to it. I would have never written you that heated of a letter. So, if it's in your files and you looked at it, you got to forgive me for that.
I guess that's personal, huh?
Any other questions? Yes, Mike?
So, with regard to the Windsor Road egress that you are requesting, are you suggesting that that would, or requesting that that would be a westbound egress only?
That's what was suggested to us by the architect for safety reasons. That people would have to come from the east, go in heading west. They would turn north, and they could only go south and turn west when they left.
Oh, so there would be ingress from the east and egress to the west?
Yeah, if that would be possible. I mean, leaving would be better. If we could only get an exit, I'll take whatever we could get. And I would just ask if we could revisit it instead of considering it a mute issue, is what I would ask.
So, you would be willing to look at a egress only to the west?
Absolutely. I do not feel like that the company that did the study was fair. They never asked us anything about attendance Sundays. They didn't, they did not understand the law of the two humpback camel. They came on a Sunday when all the college students were gone. And our business administrator keeps all the statistics. I think we were down 411 that Sunday. So, they chose the wrong Sunday to come, in our opinion.
So, okay. So, I guess what you're saying is then, there ought to be a revisit of that based on maybe a broader look at attendance over not just one Sunday, but a period of Sundays.
And we're happy to pay for that study, that's no problem. City shouldn't have to do that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, further questions? I guess at this stage, either for Pastor Grogan or for Bill or for Doug. Yes, Dennis?
Let's go back to talking with staff about a few things. Sure. So, thanks, Reverend Grogan. Thanks for your input.
Thank you.
The suggestion that was just made, I seem, I would imagine, be kind of problematic. Maybe you could give me some information about your opinions about it. Besides adding a private curb cut into and out of the semi, the arterial street, Windsor Road, it would seem that any kind of like exit directly out of the parking lot, heading to the west and attracting traffic to the west would merely send the cars immediately into the signal, which is already being flooded with cars coming out of the church from another direction. So, there would be actually a jam-up of cars waiting for some kind of release from that corner. I don't see how that could really help so much clear the traffic through the intersection speedily. I don't know. I don't know if you have any thoughts about that? Sending more cars at the same time from the, onto Windsor Road to go right into that traffic intersection at the same time that they're trying to come off of Race Street and continue home?
The whole question brought up tonight by Reverend Grogan is several years ago, so this is a memory test, and I was involved at the time, Craig was not. First of all, and if I'm talking too long, because we have a long agenda tonight, cut me off. But, access control is a very important component, particularly to arterial roadways. And I don't think what council members realize is that literally every property owner from High Cross Road to the Corporate Limits in the west, when there's development involved, want access, okay? They can never have enough access. And if you unregulate or just allow driveways to go wherever, okay, you can cause issues and problems that you may see in other parts of Urbana or in Champaign for arterial roadways. You don't want a bunch of private driveway access points every 50, 100 feet. So, we have taken a fairly rigid role in access control for roads like Windsor Road, Olympian Drive, High Cross Road, major arterials through town. It's unfortunate that we didn't do more of this 30 or more years ago, quite frankly. We can study this tonight, but I can tell you that Craig and I just last week met with Clark Lindsay, and they want another access point, and we've basically said no. I can tell you that the Atkins Group has asked for many accesses. In fact, when they bought the 600 acres and developed in town, we reluctantly allowed for the number of access points they had into the pines. It was a negotiation, if you will, for a 600-acre acquisition, golf course, blah, 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 and we acquiesced to some degree. There are other examples. Carl Clinic would love to have a direct access to Windsor Road. Do they currently today? No, they don't. So, this is not an issue for just one property, one time, end of discussion. This is, do we want to open the floodgate and allow and subject staff then to try to determine when someone should have something and when someone shouldn't? We have very clear, defined access guidelines that we use, and it's been very defendable in the past. We can look at this and see what the impacts might be, what have you. And incidentally, the consultant that did the work was a church-hired consultant, not a city-hired consultant, just for the record. But, anyway, if you want us to look into this, fine. But, tonight, we really want to know, and we need direction on a traffic signal at Race and Windsor. Time is of the essence. We have a bid lighting in June. If we tell the consultant no, we need to tell them soon so that they have the plans accordingly. Otherwise, we want to move forward with, get the full plans and specifications in. So, we include it in the bid package, but we're running late. If we want to talk more about access on Windsor Road, we can, but quite frankly, I'm kind of doing a brain memory dump right tonight on where it is. But, this is a pretty significant topic, if you want us to make an exception or look and study this, because we may as well have the other property owners up and down Windsor Road line up and make the same request. And if that's what you want, then we can allow that to happen, but typically, we've not done that.
Well, thanks for offering, but no, it's not what I'm interested in actually personally pursuing on that.
Okay.
My other question for staff is, it wasn't very clear, and I didn't really see specific data about pedestrian use of this intersection. In the past, Clark Lindsay has been voicing concerns about, well, when they discussed the roundabout, how people walking from their facility could or could not feel comfortable, you know, walking through a roundabout on this location. But, I don't know if I have ever really seen whether there's very heavy use- But I don't know if I have ever really seen whether there is very heavy pedestrian use of this intersection. It seems to be totally dedicated to car use and some bicycle use. So, you know, whether we would have, I mean, part of the conversation is if we signalize, are we interested in doing timed, you know, walking signals, you know, and, you know, push button control devices and things like this, which are, you know, very expensive and they do make a complete intersection? What information, or did I miss it, that you have about pedestrian use? Is it negligible here? Is it significant? I know that on Vine Street, it's significant because of the park. This is not a place where I see walking destination, so I'm just curious about it.
I can field that question. We don't have specific traffic counts, but I'd say from my observations, I would put it at low to moderate pedestrian use, not high. Definitely not moderate, but low to moderate, somewhere in that range. I mean, we do see people come across and make that north-south movement, particularly down to Meadowbrook Park. I mean, that's where you see, and you see people coming from the multi-use path along Race going south to Meadowbrook. I see that movement quite a bit. As far as your inquiry about the countdown timers, yes, they would be in. That is actually part of, I would say, any signalized intersection that we do, we're going to do those because that's basically the right thing to do, is put countdown timers in, do things that are there for the disabled. That's actually the law. That's the American Disabilities Act. We have to do those type of things.
And so, kind of as a spinoff of that, you know, this inquiry, if there's going to be pedestrian traffic there that we're going to be using signalized crosswalk devices, you know, Clark Lindsay was concerned about, you know, the elderly use of those and, you know, how long it takes to go across the street. So when you were doing the charrette or the public input session, one of my questions was in that we're instigating an eight-foot wide median separating the lanes? Is it possible, does the median come up to the intersection and cannot be used as an island for those people who are crossing to have halfway stopping point should the light be changing? So that there is a place for them to safely stop without having to run across what's going to be amounting to on Windsor Road, a five-lane crossing?
The median does not go up to the intersection because we're retaining the outside edges of the pavement. In essence, we have two through lanes with a left turn lane. There's no space for the median. It's a little bit different situation than perhaps what you have at Vine, where we took the middle space that was basically a painted median and put a median in there. At Race, we do not have that. Now, with regard to using that, I mean, it's not going to be there. We're not going to be able to use that as a refuge island, but the pedestrian signals would be timed where basically a pedestrian, and we use calculations that are more on the elderly pedestrian side to time it to go from one side of the road clear to the other side of the road. Now, the difference, getting back to the roundabout, the difference between a roundabout and a traffic signal is a roundabout has free flow movement. In essence, there's no way for it to be stopped unless you would put a traffic signal in at the approach, which pretty much defeats the purpose of the roundabout.
Right.
So with traffic signals, yes, we would be having enough clearance. And I, as a professional engineer, my personal opinion is that it's safer for the elderly and the disabled to cross a signalized intersection than it would be to do that at a roundabout at this time from what we know or an always stop controlled intersection.
So from your point of view, pedestrian crossing is safer at a signalized?
And that is because basically you can do a call. It shuts that movement down, and it tells you, particularly with the countdown timers or the audible indicators, that you can get safely across that without having to conflict with other modes of traffic.
Okay, thanks.
I think first Ms. Ammons and then Ms. Pressing.
I just want to, this item is on here, Mr. Gray, discussion for the proposed track. So we don't have, we're not voting on it. We're just saying we support the moving forward on the implementation of the traffic as we build this project out. So I want to say yes, I support the implementation of the traffic stop so that we can move this discussion forward. And I wanted to, and you don't have to answer at this point because it's not necessary, but on the emptying of the traffic from Stone Creek, is there a possibility to empty one way going onto Race Street? So you can just think about that and share that with us at a later time.
Mary Pressing.
I do cross that intersection, and I do see people walking or running. And I think it would be great to be able to have a signal. It'll be longer, I guess, if there's a person crossing than if there isn't. But I think the fact that you can control the lights for the traffic conditions is, sounds like a great idea.
Mr. Brown.
Yeah, in the Hanson study they did, they said they analyzed, they had to kind of reconfigure it because their software didn't have a condition to model the current conditions with the stop signs in four lanes. But when they reconfigured it, they came up with level of service F for the 2014 condition. So it sounds like even today or a year from now, when the Meadowbrook or the Clark Lindsay development is done, and maybe Virgin Prairie, it would be a F? Is that right? Okay. And is that, it seems to me like the major traffic there is during the commute times. So we're looking at this eight-hour thing for the warrant, the eighth hour. So that's like the minimum of the maximums kind of for the warrant that justifies this. Did you give us peak counts at the peak hours? Is that what's on these maps? I couldn't really tell what those numbers were.
No, what they do is they give you the eighth hourly volume, so that's a combination of any eight hours during a twenty-four hour period. And then also the fourth highest hourly volume, so you add the four-hour period in any twenty-four hour period. And then there's basically thresholds within the study. I mean, it's basically this diagram here is what they do. And if you're not within that threshold or you don't cross over, like in our case, two or more lanes and one lane on the approach, then you really shouldn't be installing traffic signals. So today, the signals are warranted.
Okay. And it looks like there's already probably almost twice as much traffic there as there is at Philo in Windsor, or at least significantly more, and we have a light there, right?
Yeah. Although I think, to me, when we look at Philo, yeah, I guess on the north leg, north and south leg, yes, there's more traffic at Race Street than there is at Philo Road. And then in the back here, there is an exhibit that does give the peak hour.
Yeah. Oh, that is peak, okay. And then the other, one other question is if there is, if it is mostly during the commute times where you need the lights, I don't think we have anything in town, but in some towns I've seen some that have, they change during those times, and then the rest of the time they're flashing red, and that could be annoying if you live near it. But I don't know how many people would be able to see that and how annoying that would be. Is that something we would consider hearing?
We haven't done that. I mean, some communities will do it in the, particularly in the middle of the night for, you know, energy consumption and things like that. What we would probably look at is that Windsor would dwell in green, in essence, unless there's a call from Race, and then that would activate the signals to go, so you could then come off of Race Street and through.
So if the church was to determine that stop signs were better than signals, that might be an option to put flashing red there on Sunday mornings or something?
It could possibly. I mean, I do think, like Bill said, I think we could work with the church and improve actually the flow out of the church parking lot on Sunday mornings. With, when we have options with traffic signals, we don't with always stop control.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, Mr. Roberts.
And would you be allowing right to turn on red if traffic cleared?
I'd say yes, we would have right turn on red on this intersection.
So that would help clear traffic too, even on a red light?
It could until you get to that first person that stops and wants to go through on Race, and then, you know, then they can't go too, so.
Ms. Merlin.
Does the $320,000 annual cost for Windsor Road include the $25,000 a year for paying for the traffic signal?
Yes, ma'am.
And I've had a couple of people say, why spend $205,000 for this? If we said, no, we're not going to do it this year, when would you be back asking us to put in a traffic signal?
Well, I'll be direct with you. If we don't do it now, it's very likely that we won't come back until there's a high demand, meaning that we're getting so many problems at that intersection. And so if I had to guess, I would say five, ten years out. And then we're looking at, I mean, the cost to design is actually embedded in the $250,000 we receive from the state. So in essence, we do not have any local money in the design of this signals at this point.
So if it were a standalone project, what would it cost?
If it was a standalone project, I would anticipate with, and keep in mind, I think the 205 is actually taking advantage of the fact that we have a bigger project. So I would, if I was to guess, I would say that we'd probably be sitting at $275,000 with engineering fees in total.
This year?
This year, if we pulled it out and did a separate project, like next year. And then, of course, you know, keep in mind.
Inflation.
Inflation, yeah. So in the future, it would be quite a bit more, yes.
Okay. And then, can I ask one more? I'm glad to see that the rapid flash beacons are planned for the Meadowbrook Crossing. Can you tell me what the driver responsibility is when they come across those? Are they supposed to yield all the time to pedestrians?
It's basically viewed as a supplement to the warning signs. So when a driver sees those, and they will be in a flashing wig-wag pattern, it indicates to them that basically, yes, there's something different here going on, and that would be a pedestrian that's entered into the crosswalk via pushing the button. Then they should legally, once that pedestrian stops, puts a foot into the crosswalk, they should stop and let that pedestrian proceed through. What happens on a multi-lane road, though, is you get what they call a multiple threat, which is what happens is the one car stops on the inside, the other car does not. But studies have shown that these type of traffic control devices help with that, help prevent that type or minimize, I should say, that type of accident.
So you might still have a multiple threat, but less often?
You're always going to have something, but I'd say that this would be an improvement. And keep in mind, we've always been looking, since I've been here, you know, does the intersection warrant signals? No. Could we put in something like a hawk signal? It doesn't warrant. Basically, there's not enough pedestrian demand, consistent pedestrian demand to warrant those. But this is what I would view as a step up in safety enhancement.
I mean, I cross there all the time, and you do. It's very unpredictable who's going to stop and who's not, so you just assume nobody will stop. But the best thing is to be pushing a baby stroller, and then people tend to respect you, but I don't always have that. Okay, thanks.
Yes, Charlie.
Or pulling a bicycle trailer, you get the same respect. A couple of questions here. I think that there are a couple of trade-offs that we've got to understand. I think it's going to be, you know, pedestrians will have to wait longer when they do come to this intersection, have to wait for the signal. They won't be able to just cross when it's their turn. One of the advantages of a four-way stop is that, you know, everybody gets a turn to get across there, and it's a trade of efficiencies here versus convenience, I think. Probably increases the dangers of a bike left cross accident, where a bicycle going forward is not seen by a car and gets left crossed by a car turning left. And that, so one of the issues that I want to raise here is, you know, we're talking about increased efficiency. We're trading efficiency for certain kinds of willing safety. We're balancing different kinds of safety factors here. So one of the questions I have is what's the research on the cost and severity of crashes at signalized intersections versus four-way stops?
It is my understanding that at a four-way stop, you would have a greater chance for more severe accidents, left-turning accidents, angle accidents. And you also then have more rear-end accidents occurring. This would be at a signalized intersection. When you have an always stop, the problem is you can get people that, particularly on a wider road like this, that miss the stop signs completely. But I think your point is well taken. Anything that we do is a balancing act. And we're looking at balancing efficiency with safety. And, you know, it's not black and white. It's not very easy to, you know, discern exactly the best approach here. But when we recognize national standards, and when we look at the, basically, the corridor as a whole, we're recommending traffic.
My concern is that the severity of an individual accident, particularly between a pedestrian and a vehicle that thinks they have a green light when it's red. And we've had one of those at Philo and Windsor already. And in the data, it says that it wasn't an injury accident, and, you know, the wording here is rather strange. I said, non incapacitating injury crash in 2013. And with a bicyclist, there's two listed here, and I know that Rick Francis is still not back on his bicycle.
Well, the type of injury would be how basically it's categorized by either, but pretty much the Illinois Department of Transportation, how that's. So, I mean, you may have particular knowledge that we don't have.
Oh, okay, yeah, because I mean, it was a severe accident for the bicyclist. And again, so one of the issues, the last issue I'll raise here is how are you going to address? You've got a multi-use lane that dumps out at an angle to the intersection right now. And I know when I've used that, when I'm pulling my bike trailer full of loaded gear to my garden plot, I use that as opposed to the road. And sometimes it gets a little tricky to cross there, and I want to cross diagonally to the bike path on the other side. I can do that now with a four-way stop situation because, you know, typically there's nobody around, and I can go diagonally across. What's going to change? You're going to put?
Yeah, you would have to cross each, you would have to cross two lanes to legally cross. You'd have to cross.
Yeah, so, but is there going to be a sort of a multi-use little section there in the southwest corner to accommodate bicyclists that are coming from the west to the east on the bike lane that's on Windsor?
If I'm understanding it, basically a bicyclist would be like a pedestrian at the intersection.
Okay, so is there going to be room to maneuver in there? Yeah, okay, okay. Because I think that one of those concerns is the angles, and that's an angle. That angle issue is also, I think, contributed to the accident at Philo and Windsor.
Right.
So when you reconfigure that, I need to talk to you about that too. So those angles there, so assuming you're going to straighten that out.
Our goal is to always do what we call a two-point intersection, so we would basically get you perpendicular or parallel. It depends upon the angle that you're coming in, not come in at a forty-five degree angle. Sometimes, though, there's physical constraints like utilities and various other things. But I'll have to look into that corner in detail, but I believe that we could try to get something that could work there.
Yeah, it seems like, I know the university probably built that path at one time, or is that a city? That's a city path, right? That's on city right-of-way at that? Okay, so we can move it as needed then, okay. Yeah, I just, that's another, I'm hesitant about this whole thing because I think there, I'm worried that the severity of an accident with a bicyclist or pedestrian is going to be much more severe than what we have in a four-way stop, in spite of what you've said, so.
Yes, Mike.
So, following up on what Charlie's saying, I'm just wondering. So from Philo and Windsor to, I believe, Windsor and Duncan, is this not the only intersection of its caliber that is not controlled by traffic signals?
That's correct.
Do we have the same kind of, despite the anecdotal reference to an accident, do we have the same kind of experience at those other intersections?
I don't recall anything coming to our direct attention. Now, we didn't, we don't, you know, unfortunately, we're more reactive than proactive, to be honest with you. So we, you know, when we, something comes to our attention, then we study that just because of limited resources. But I don't recall of any significant issues at any other location.
Okay. So this, but this is, just to reiterate, this is the only intersection of its magnitude in Champaign or Urbana?
Right, you'd have to go all the, yes.
That is not signaled.
From Duncan.
On Windsor.
Duncan in Champaign all the way to High Cross Road, yes. It's the only one.
All right, thank you.
So, we don't, since this is a discussion item, we don't have a formal vote. On the other hand, I think Public Works needs some guidance on whether we are encouraged. on, on whether, whether we are encouraging them to move forward with the more specific planning. So I think I'd like to, I think I'd like to, you know, we have hea- heard, I think, Ms., Ms. Ammons and Mayor Pressing say that, that they wish to go forward. I'd like to, if, can we get indications from others? Okay, we can do it.
Motion to stay.
Okay, we can do a, do a straw poll, then, I guess.
Motion to stop.
Motion to, motion, okay, yes.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Jacobson. I move that Public Works move forward on the traffic signal at Windsor Road and Ray Street in compliance with the Windsor Road Project. That's my motion.
Second?
I'll second.
So is there, yes, the discussion?
I do say, I, I, I'll support this motion. I did meet with Pastor Grogan and business manager at the Stone Creek Church today, and as long as we can work on improving the traffic flow out of the church, I think the benefits of doing this now outweigh the costs of doing it in the future, and that's, and I think it'll improve the safety, 'cause as a pedestrian crossing that intersection, I personally think it's very terrifying now, so I'll support this.
Okay. In favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. So.
Eric?
Hi.
That's me.
Yes, it's Mike, okay.
Scott Tess and I would like to give a brief report on municipal electric aggregation.
Aha, okay.
We're mindful of the busy agenda, we'll keep it short.
All right, is there any objection to hearing a brief report, a brief report on that right now? So, the floor is yours, sir.
We got the final Ameren Illinois default rates on Tuesday last, last week, and, you know, we started the default program two years ago, we had great success, low price, saved residents almost a million dollars a year. Unfortunately, this time, the, the, the city's municipal electric aggregation price, which is four point seven four cents per kilowatt hour, the default rates came in slightly lower than that. For the summer months, the rate will be four point six three, so it's about a tenth of a cent cheaper with the Ameren default rate. And then, in the October through May months, it'll be four point four four, about three tenths of a cent lower. Some of that difference in price is attributable to, we are having a hundred percent recs to offset greenhouse gases. That's about a seventeen hundredth of a cent charge, and there's also the municipal fee. Should be noted that while the city's program is a hundred percent green, Ameren's is nine percent. So, that's a, for people who care about environmental factors like that, that's a reason to stay with the city's program. The recs are also a big part, Scott can tell you about our climate action plan in a way of reducing greenhouse gas emissions by fifty percent by.
More like a third.
A third, okay. Also, should be noted, the default rate is for one year, and the aggregation rate is a flat rate for two years. We think next year, our price is gonna be very competitive. I spoke today with the director of the Illinois Power Agency, and he said he believes the default rate will go up for each of the next two years. He explained that this year, one of the reasons for the, the low rates is when the smart grid legislation was passed two years ago, there was a requirement that IPA buy a substantial block of power, and this was in 2012. It was a good time to buy, prices were really low, it was the same time that we bought aggregation, so about three-quarters of the power that Ameren Illinois will be using this year is, is actually 2012 power, so that's giving them very competitive prices. I checked today on the internet, we actually, right now, have a below-market rate for the city. It's just that the default rate is actually even further below market. If you're an individual and you wanted to buy a two-year fixed rate, if you went to either, the prices I checked were in Tegris and Home Field, and they're almost five point nine cents for a two-year fixed price. So we have a very competitive price, it's, but it's not as competitive as the default rate, and we wanted to let residents know that. I guess the good news is residents can switch to the default rate with no penalty, no penalty fee. It's very simple, they, alls they have to do is call Home Field, there's a toll-free number, I'll give it right now. There's also an article up on our website. The number is eight six 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 nine four twelve sixty-two. That's eight six 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 nine four twelve sixty-two. You can also get switched over by contacting Home Field Energy by email, and that email address is custcare, C-U-S-T-C-A-R-E, at homefieldenergy.com. You'll need your Ameren account number in both cases if you want to switch. There is another factor, too, that, it's something called the purchased electricity adjustment. It's a way, well, I guess Ameren Illinois is an electricity delivery company, they're not supposed to profit from the sale of electricity. With this big block power buy of 2012 power, at the same time they bought this big block of power, they were losing all their customers to aggregation. So they have been selling excess power into the mar- into the wholesale market and making a profit. While that profit doesn't go to the Ameren bottom line, it's refunded to the customers through the PEA. So the PEA may actually lower the default rate from mid-four cent range to, at least for some months, to below four cents. So that's why we wanted to let residents know this. We have an article up on our website that, that lays all this out, and tells people how they can switch if they want to. I guess that's, is there anything you want to add, Scott?
Sure. Just wanted to hit a couple of highlights. I went back to an August twenty-sixth memo that Mike and I had brought to council, and we had listed in that memo three benefits from aggregation: lower prices, green power, and price stability. We still have two out of three of those, and although the Ameren price is slightly lower than ours right now, we don't actually know what it'll be next year, so we may pick up that third piece as well in the future. Also, we have data from our supplier for six quarters of aggregation. In five of those six quarters, we, our residents saved money on electricity from aggregation. And for those six quarters, the net total savings was almost a million dollars. So I just wanted to share that, that big picture.
One other thing about if people decide, and I, we understand completely, if people decide they want to follow the cheapest cost, if they switch, after sixty days with Ameren, they will be locked into Ameren for a year. But if they were to switch now, people could benefit from the lower Ameren price, and then check back with the city's website and, and see what the new default rate, and what, what the city's, how the city's rate compares to that, so this does give people additional options.
Mike? Okay, so you just partially answered, or maybe totally answered, my first question, which is, so if, if, if a resident does decide to go with the Ameren default rate now, that doesn't preclude them from re-upping with the city?
After a year.
If rates change, but it's a twelve, is that a rolling twelve months?
It, yes, when, when you start, so you'd probably want to do it now if you wanted to take it, you know, be in a position where you could compare a year from now.
Okay, well, and Scott brought up something that I think is very important and people should consider. From a business perspective, we always think about stability. Big deal. It's a big deal in business. It ought to be a big deal to folks at home. It's not about saving a penny here or a penny there, short-term, but it's about, what's my cost long-term? How can I budget this expense? And I just want to applaud both of you for this program. I am a happy participant, and I will remain one despite this default rate, because I enjoy the stability of the cost of the energy. And this is one of those things that I think government can, can provide of great benefit to, to its citizens, its residents, its taxpayers. So, I'm all in, and I just wanted to let you know, that's my perspective as a business owner. I appreciate the stability. I'm not gonna play the market, I'm not gonna get in and out, because I've budgeted for it, and I am where I am, and twelve months from now, I fully anticipate that the city rate will be less than Ameren. So, thank you.
Mayor Pressing.
Should be noted on the, on the PEA thing, that, that's very variable. If there is a big, if there are large numbers of people who switch from aggregation programs to the Ameren default rate, that PEA could go from being three-quarters of a cent per kilowatt hour, it could be cut in half very quickly. So it's, it's not probably a great thing to bank on, you might be able to take advantage of it, but it, it could disappear on you pretty quick. Also, the small business aspect, while we, while the default rate is lower than the city's aggregation rate for residential, actually, aggregation prices are lower for small business. The, the Ameren rates are actually, the default rates are actually higher. And that's for businesses that use fifteen thousand kilowatts hour.
Let me clarify, I'm in residential land business, so, yeah, I'm just using the business analogy, but, yeah, residential I'm in as well.
Okay. Mayor Pressing?
Yeah, I just want to say, I appreciate Mike's, Mike Madigan's statement. It's a very small difference, and I would stay in it becau- I would stay in the aggregation program, because I think that's the key to our climate action plan. But I would also like to point out that there are much higher prices in northern Illinois, and they're going up substantially, so we are in a very fortunate position here.
Yeah, in talking to Anthony Starr, he had this quote that I liked, my old reporter's hat, he said, "The current electricity pricing situation is a short-term, quote, gift to downstate Illinois." And it really is, 'cause the prices in comm-ed territory go into like seven and a half cents per kilowatt hour, so they're gonna be almost double what we're gonna be paying.
Okay, any, any further questions? Okay, thank you. Now, probably at a record late hour, we come to approval of minutes of the previous meeting. So.
Remove approval?
I think Ms. Ammons was first, and I'll, I think, yeah, I will say, in a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we come to public input. So I will initially just read off the people who want to provide public input but not address the council. Keon Connerly, representing the U of I Credit Union in support of the Urbana Business Association. Susan Jepson, representing Reynolds Towing, in support of the Urbana Business Association. Matt Cho, representing himself in support of Urbana Business Association. Dana Mancuso, in support of the Urbana Business Association. And Bishop King James Underwood and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood in support of, or express, to express concern over the Ellis subdivision sewer issue. Those are, those are all that I have who, who, who wish to do that. Now, I do have Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, who wishes to address the committee with respect to the, oh, okay, I guess this is after the Evelyn, after the Public Works budget presentation, okay. So we'll, we'll put that aside. And then Carol McCusick wishes to address the committee on masking on PDF documents. So please, the floor is yours, ma'am.
Carol McCusick, nineteen oh seven North Cunningham Avenue. I'd like to point out that it would be good for people, just for their personal use, to, if the city would afford a way, you can mark on the PDFs that are, for example, the ones that are, well, here I'm on a, let's say you, for the council, you know, where you have ordinances in the agenda materials, or you might be mark, and, you know, the people here were talking about things that might be on maps, the church say. If the city would, you know, make some Acrobat features that we can use, you know, that would not, I, I would like to have a Board of Government information that make a lot of government information solutions work together, but maybe there could be a solution that could come, be budgeted, or an order to staff of the Information Services that would get us going in a way that wouldn't limit the options to the Board of Government information, like, so it's, what I'm wanting, if you'd like, go to these PDFs, say it's the PDF of the Plan Commission bylaws, and you highlight the whole thing, and you say, "Copy," and then you copy it into a Word document, 'cause that's, I guess that's the place I can mark on it, using track changes. It doesn't copy well, and sometimes stuff in the ordinances wouldn't, a lib- a letter from Libby Tyler, a staff memo, wouldn't copy at all into a Word document. So I'm, I'm looking for something that, that will show that, in a PDF, that will show that my comment is, is me ta- making the marks, and I'm marking on top of this official government picture. And I, probably you'd want to have something that identifies you, and also identifies, or gives the date that you're making this comment, or whatever. And then, it might also, you know, what it would work, what, you know, if you wanted to have a record of sharing it in a meeting, you'd probably want to be identified as a public commenter, and this other person is identified as a commissioner, and, you know. It, it might, that's the kind of thing that you might want to have it work with later. I bet, I thank you very much for your time, but I'm thinking of like something that you would ask the Information Services Department to do for, for, and, and make sure that it was something that was affor- was taught to everybody. Everybody knows how to do this. It would really save time. Okay, there's another thing about it, not only does it not copy well, you know, think about it, if you just go to the document, and you can mark on it, and it's already stamped with your name and the date, you did, you made that mark, it's much, and, and you can take it on your flash drive to the meeting and show, you know, it's really efficient compared to copying it, and not even have it have any authority. Once you copy it, it doesn't copyright, or, you know what I'm saying?
So, are there any questions for Ms. McCusick? Okay, thank you very much. We have Mr. Carlos Donaldson, who rep- wishes to talk about taxes, Carl, and business development.
Carlos Donaldson, four oh six East Brooklyn Drive, Urbana, and I'm a fifty-year taxpayer in Urbana. You said taxes and other, there's other things I'm gonna mention also.
Taxes, Carl, and business development, you said, yes.
And a graduate of the University of Illinois in urban planning. At a previous Southeast Urban Neighborhood Association meeting, a few things were mentioned that I would like to comment on. Business growth, I have seen very little compared to Champaign and Savoy. We used to have a theater, now we must go to Champaign or Savoy. A bowling alley, now we must go to Champaign or Savoy. We once had an Isner's at Lincoln Square, then on Philo Road, now we have none. IGA and Kmart, and now we have neither, and. IGA and Kmart, and now we have neither, and the Kmart that was in Champaign now houses Home Depot, and we have apartments with problems. We do have a ruler, but I'm not sure, we do have a ruler, but I am not seeing more than 10 cars there at any one given time. County Market, and this is just a rumor that I've heard, that they don't know whether they're going to remodel or move. If they move, that would be a great loss. We talk about Carl, why not look forward? Carl is going to be here. They have about one-third of Lincoln Square building, the southeast Lincoln Square parking lot, and they also have a portion of the southwest part of Lincoln Square parking lot, which I guess the city is getting some money for that. Why not try to work with Carl in a way that would not continue to spend money on legal fees and try to see what we, as a city, can work on to make things better for the taxpayers? Use the University of Illinois students and departments more, undergraduate and graduate students for projects including planning, rather than always spending big dollars for consultants, which produce the same results and cost the taxpayers much more. And incidentally, I was glad to see that a student was used on the Lyman Project and I'm sure it didn't cost as much as it would have cost if they'd have used an outside consultant for that project. So, that's a plus. On the bicycle lanes, stop taking parking from the front of taxpayers' homes, making more bike lanes which are not being used that much and taxpayers are paying to have them restripped. That money could be used to fix the streets that are much needed, such as the potholes that we've seen a lot of this year. Some of the streets are certainly not safe for bicycle riders either. Legal fees are growing and I hope that we see an end to that in the near future. That way, money could be better spent. Digital signs, or the lack of, are hurting small business. Why can't we try it? Champaign does. Have them and they don't seem to be having problems with business growth. We in Urbana would be better off if we did more recruiting of business rather than apartments in single-family home areas. Myers was opposed early on, but now look at it. That's where businesses should be and that is planning. Buses in Stone Creek are not needed, especially if the residents don't want them, but I will talk about it at a later meeting. I had that problem years ago with street repairs from the use of the city buses and Urbana alderman helped me get, that, that helped me get in the buses rerouted. He was not my alderman, nor was he a mayor for life. He was a Republican and I was a Democrat. We must work together and listen to taxpayers who you represent in Urbana and we must, we must want to continue living up to our image of being a bedroom community and no businesses. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Donaldson? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Carletta Donaldson wishes to address on prayer, moment of silence.
It's Carletta Donaldson, 406 Brookings Drive in Urbana. I felt really good when Pastor Grogan got up here and, just a little excerpt, before I start, if we could just take a moment of silence for our fallen soldiers for Memorial Day. I know that after the first holiday, or the holidays, we have the Pledge of Allegiance and all that, but just a moment of silence for our veterans who made the ultimate sacrifice, if we could do that for a moment. Thanks. And as I look at the agenda, motion to approve city council goals, it may be too late for this, but possibly in the future, if we could consider opening at least twice per month with either a moment of silence and/or the Pledge of Allegiance, and not just after the holidays, just something to consider. And then, back to my first thought with Pastor Grogan, made me feel pretty good to hear him come in and speak, and he's talked to Craig, who I've talked to on several occasions as well. That's what we should do more of, maybe sitting down and, and speaking with our residents and businesses and their concerns and really listening to them and taking into account what they're saying. And as a pastor, I could see some, and hear some positive things. So, for our religious leaders that may be listening out here, I know we always have at least one clergy or two clergy in the audience at our council meetings. Tonight, we had the privilege of having two clergy from two separate wards here, so maybe we'll work on the other five and have at least clergy in the room and maybe we can get things done in a timely and cordial manner. Diane, I'd like to say thanks for your comments when Aaron Bonds, our planning intern, your question about asking the residents, were they speaking to the landlords of the renters, possibly? I had the same situation. I had the opportunity to sit on Dr. Stacy's, Stacy Harwood's Urban Planning 474 class this semester, and I see one of the students, Grace, is back there. And that was one of my concerns. They dealt with the neighborhood in Champaign and there was a lot of rental property where they did surveys and although the, the renters live there, it's ultimately the landlord's responsibility and, and in that neighborhood, a lot of the landlords and owners were thinking about selling their property. So, although the residents that live there could, could offer input, but the final say as far as staying or leaving would ultimately be up to the landlord. So, that was a great point and I appreciate you bringing that up. I'd also like to mention that during that class, I said, you know, I wish things like this were going in Urbana. So, I am glad, and I know that there are things going on, but to hear a presentation tonight and something that I did not know about and know people in that neighborhood, so I'd be curious to see what they thought about the students coming over there, it was good to hear that things like that are happening in Urbana. So, I'm, I'm glad to hear that. And then, finally, I think that's it. Oh, I spoke to the chief of police tonight, and just to clarify some things, I spoke with them last week at the Sona meeting, and I know last week at our city council meeting, Mayor Pressing had said that he had mentioned that he had been to the churches and talked about tasers. Yes, he had, but that was when he became chief, he made, made it a point to visit all of the churches and just to introduce himself, and that's in Urbana. Unfortunately, I don't go to church in Urbana, so I missed that conversation, but I did get a pamphlet from him, shared it with a few of the residents in Urbana, and as I shared with him, I wanted to listen to the presentation tonight, hopefully, and I think he said that it probably won't be any answered, but just in case, and then I'll send those questions that were asked from the community. That's it. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Donaldson? Yes, Mr. Brown?
Thanks for giving me a, a chance to comment again on the neighborhood assessment Aaron Bond did. That, one of the reasons that really made that successful was the involvement, not only of the students, but also of the neighborhood. A couple of people from the neighborhood are still here and that really does, that does...
I'm glad they stayed. Thank you.
That does help get better response from the neighbors and the neighbors see, you know, that the local, that the actual, their neighbors are involved.
And I saw you in the pictures too, so you were very much involved. So, that's a good thing. We attempted to do that in Champaign as well. Thanks.
Yes, Ms. Marland?
Well, we should give a shout out to Robin Arbiter and James Morland, who were very instrumental in this needs assessment. And they're from the Lyman neighborhood.
Yay. Okay. I will give a big shout out with my microphone. Okay, and Esther Pat wishes to address council on council goals, Barnes Mobile Home Park.
Thank you. My name's Esther Pat, I'm speaking on behalf of the Champaign-Urbana Tenant Union. I went to the website to try to find the council goals and it says, it redirected me from that page, so it must have gotten moved, but I was told by two council members that assisting the residents of Barnes Mobile Home Park is listed in your goals, and if that's the case, I'm glad to hear that. Seventeen years ago, I was on the city council when Lincoln Mobile Home Park closed as a result of city action. In that case, the city did ultimately help with the relocation of the homeowners, but the whole matter was really badly bungled and Mr. Munson might well remember that because he was a news gazette reporter at the time covering the council. Hundreds of staff hours, and it's not exaggeration to say this, were wasted. And the result of it all was that some families got more than 20 times as much money as others and there was no rational reason for it, other than the whole messed up way this was handled. So, don't let that happen again. I'm here to offer you my experience to help you prevent that from happening again. There's just no reason to do it that way. The city's first mistake in the Lincoln Mobile Home Park closing was not speaking with the homeowners who lived in the park. They just spoke to the park owner. And the folks who live at Barnes did not know anything, but did not even know that you had voted in December to buy the land upon which their homes sit, until they got their notice on April 15th telling them they have a year to move out. I encourage you to engage with the homeowners. Now, on the plus side with the Barnes situation, back with Lincoln Mobile Home Park, the day the park closing was announced, there were 80 homes in that park and 76 were owner-occupied. Barnes has 10 homes, one is vacant, so there are only nine households. This is doable. Just, you know, a lot of these people are long-term residents. There's one woman who's been there for 20 years, two families who've been there since 1997 when they moved to Barnes from Lincoln Mobile Home Park because they were getting displaced by the city then, one who's been there 14 years, another 10. These are not people who just happen to be there, they're people who live there, this is their home, they've been there for a long time. To the best of my knowledge, all nine households have incomes below 50% of area median, that's what HUD considers very low income, and at least four, maybe five, have incomes below $15,000, that's one five, below $15,000 a year. Most of the residents are over age 55 and, and on fixed incomes, their sole source of income is either social security disability, or in a few cases, they are actually retired, you know, they're older. However, there are two households that have school-aged children and they would like, wherever they have to move to, they would like to stay in the Urbana School District. There are also three households that have no automobile, so they need to relocate to someplace that's on the MTD bus route. The main problems that the homeowners face in situations like this, it's the same ones today as they were 17 years ago with Lincoln Mobile Home Park, are, one, most of the homes at Barnes are too old to be accepted in other mobile home parks, unless someone with some clout gets those parks to accept them. Many mobile homes are very old and in good condition, as long as they stay where they are, but to be, but to get to another park, they have to be accepted. There's one, maybe two homes whose owners are questioning whether they can, whether the home will actually withstand, physically withstand a move. Because these, you know, mobile homes, they're really manufactured homes, these are not, these aren't RVs, these aren't homes on wheels, these are manufactured homes that were put down on the land and you have to pay someone to come, tear it down, hook it up, transport it, and then set it up at the new place. And on that, all nine households will have to spend thousands of dollars to move their homes. It's not cheap to move...
You have, you have one minute, Ms. Pat.
Thank you. It's not cheap to move a manufactured home. Also, all nine of these households, once they do move, will see a rent increase of probably at least $100 a month for their lot rent. I realize that when you voted last December, because I read the staff memo, you thought the people affected by the land purchase were tenants. And they are tenants of the land, very much the same way JSM Management is tenants of the land that you call the East Campus Commercial District. They don't actually own the land, they own the buildings, not the land. Likewise, these folks don't own the land, but they own their homes. All of them own them outright, they pay year after year for maintenance of their homes, they pay annual taxes on their homes, and as is probably the case with most, if not all of you, the value of their home is the primary financial asset that the household has. So, simply losing the home is not an option. I know money's tight, but you found $113,000 to buy the land in a year that you don't even need it, it won't even take that much to help these folks. Please, find the money in the budget. Thank you. I just wanted to ask for a question. Any questions?
Yes, Ms. Adams.
First of all, I just want to say that when this issue came up to the city council, unfortunately, we didn't have the breadth of research that you just provided this council to make a decision on to sell or not to sell. So, that's in hindsight appreciated. But from your experience, in what ways would you recommend that the city, there are nine families, according to what you've found, in what ways do you recommend the city, or that the city can help with the relocation effort? They can't, obviously can't afford to pay to have a truck come move those homes.
Who can't afford it?
The residents that live there.
The homeowners of the property. First, first off is finding a destination that, where can they, to where can they move their homes? And, and if, and I don't know if this, if city officials working with the other, you know, went to all the mobile home parks in Urbana and tried to get them to agree to take the homes. That's a possibility, I don't know if that will work. If a destination's to be found for homes, then there's the issue of, of what it would cost to move it. And that's, giving the financial assistance along those lines would be obviously very helpful to people. If a destination cannot be found, or if the cost of moving the home is actually greater than the cost of buying another home that's already in one of the parks in Urbana, buying people another home so that they can move from the one there are now to that one, and then basically they'd have to give up the home they have now. Another option also is, if you're not doing, if you, I mean, I, I don't want to be critical, I understand why you buy land, if the sellers, if the owner wants to sell and you want to maintain control, you don't want someone else buying that piece of land because it's right next to the Public Works garage. I understand that, why you, why you're buying it before you need it. But if you're not going to do anything with it for a few years, change the requirement that they have to clear, that the land has to be cleared before you'll buy it. The reason the park gave the, I mean, I'm not saying they weren't doing that with you, but the reason the park owner gave the residents the notice that they have to vacate on, by April 15th, 2015, is because part of the deal that you folks passed in December says that you'll buy the land after, there were two conditions. One was that you'll do the environmental study, make sure that there isn't toxic stuff that you don't want there, and you've already done that, and that the land is cleared. That means they all have to be gone. But if you went back on that, because obviously the seller wouldn't care, if you, as the buyer, decided the land doesn't have to be cleared, that would also give you the opportunity to avail yourself of money, which I'm told is already committed for the next fiscal year, but might well be available the year after that, in your home and/or CDBG budgets. And just, you know, give you example on expenses here, and again, I'm not, I don't, in any way criticizing Habitat for Humanity or other programs you do, but next week, you're going to be vote, I think it'll be next week, you'll be voting on a measure that's coming up at Community Development Commission this Thursday night, to make a change in the home budget, this is for next year. And the city of Urbana is going to spend 80, that's eight zero, $80,000 on one family. I mean, it's not really just for the family, but $40,000 will be to tear down the property at, I believe it's 301 Thompson, and then you're committing another $40,000 to subsidize the habitat, the construction of a Habitat for Humanity house. So, that's $80,000 and what you're going to get is one house. You'll get cleared up, you'll get rid of a blighted property and one house. Gee, is there $80,000 in that pool of money for nine houses? You know, I mean, for nine families? That, I mean, that's approx, and I don't want to limit it to that, but that's approximately, I think, what you're talking about. So, if you could make it, if you could have more, if you need more time to come up with more money, since you're not going to use the land anyway, giving the residents more time to be able to stay at Barnes until you can assist them with proper move would also be a way to help. And different people are in different situations. There are a couple of those homes that were built in the 80s and I think they might be able to find, I've not, I mean, I don't really know, but they seemed more hopeful, when I spoke with them, of their ability to find a destination for their home than the person who's got a 1967 home or a 1974 home. Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
Any more questions for Ms. Pat?
Thank you.
Thank you. And I also have a card from Donna Wilson, and is this the right time that you would like to address? Okay. Of people relocated from new land purchase.
My name is Donna Wilson, 610 and a half, South Glover, Lot 16, Urbana. And last December, you have just been told you passed a vote to purchase a land, but your memo only described a narrow strip of land just north, three buildings making up Urbana Public Works, that's Oregon and Glover. Well, there's nine real, very vibrant people that call that home, and their homes, as Esther said, are all paid off in full, and they hold their heads up in, with dignity and welcome family and friends to home in Barnes Park. We do pay, like she, she, I think she mentioned, we pay all home repairs, we pay lot maintenance, and every one of us has paid in full county, personal homeowner taxes. Now, some of us are here tonight to, to, we're, we're getting on our journey to the relocation and we want to share some information to let you see what our situations are, and they are different. But your decisions have huge impact on our lives. I'm a person who has lived in Champaign or Urbana since 1975 and I've been a homeowner since 1985. I've enjoyed my residency at Lot 16, Barnes Park, for 20 years, since I arrived there in 1994. there in nineteen ninety-four. And I've come to enjoy that role, and I think most people don't wish to change a role to which they've grown accustomed. I heard no word from the city or from the home, landowners, about a park closing or a necessary move until five weeks ago. I did receive from Weisiger Trust, the present landlords, a certified letter telling me I must vacate my Lot sixteen by April, she said fifteen, I thought it was sixteen, one of those, in twenty fifteen. And I, I think that I will be able to do that, I, I have to do a lot of work, and I've had an illness, but it's not going to remain serious, and I think I'm going to have energy in the days to come and, and be able to get organized, find good people to help me, and put forth much, much effort, and make my due date to vacate my lot. But some people there may have trouble, and a few days ago, Bill Brown and Dennis Roberts met with some of us and told us it could be very, very many years before you would ever think of developing, developing that land. Some of them could very well benefit from you allowing, if they were having trouble to, after you became landlords, the owners of the land, if you would, if they were struggling to get to, off the land by that time, if you would allow them to remain, even until there was a team of developers commencing work on the land, or at least one or two years. It might make all the difference in the world that they could get relocated. Now, some of us think our homes will survive the move, and some things I could ask is information about which parks are most likely to be our best possibilities to relocate in. We might need ideas on the best moving companies to move homes, how about insurance, the extra insurance that we need on moving thirty-year-old homes, we, you know, any information like this is greatly appreciated. The people who believe there's a judgment pass that that home cannot be moved, they may have to forfeit that home.
You have one minute, Ms. Wilson.
Please, possibly find help getting into a new home, whatever help the city might be able to provide. If they can't find the destination Esther was talking about, this might be, they don't meet HUD certification, it's not fourteen foot wide, it's got too much age, it is many, many repairs on it that will not pass entrance requirements into a new park, you might help them, they may have to forfeit their home on those reasons, and you might be able to help them. The most vulnerable among us, those with very serious illness and serious disabilities, and there's been many of them at Barnes Park, we must not let them fall into a slippery, slidy slope of homelessness over this southeast Urbana purchase of land. Please don't let it be a catalyst for catastrophe for these, our fellow citizens of Urbana. Here with compassion, these issues brought before you by people that are human beings, that are homeowners with households, and they're great people, what can you do to lessen upheaval in their lives? Thank you for your consideration.
I think Mayor Pressing wished to...
Thank you so much for coming, and I can assure you that we will devote our energy to make sure that everybody ends up in a good situation. And we don't, we haven't worked out the details, but we didn't realize it was a problem until Esther raised it, and so we do take it seriously. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that's...
While this is fresh on our mind, yeah, can, can we, I know Libby's out of town, what are the next steps that we're going to take on this, to deal with it?
We're working out a plan, and we'll consult with all the residents as well.
Okay.
But we didn't really know that it was a problem until, as I said, it was called to our attention, but once it was, we want to deal with it.
Yeah, I sort of like the idea of managing the park for a few years while we accumulate some money to move some people forward, you know, that, I mean, we can collect the rent on the prop, we can collect the rent on the property and use that to turn around to help people move, move and relocate, when, when we need the property.
Yeah, I think we'll just look at all the options and, and ask the residents for their opinion and work it out.
Yeah, Ms. Marlin?
Well, we, we do need to work something out so that we aren't leaving people without a place to go. But my other question is, why, the bigger question is, why didn't we know about this situation, and what can we do to prevent us being kind of left in the dark about this in the future? We, we, I don't think we did get a complete picture when we voted on this, and, and I think that the people on the land is as important as the land. So how do we, how do we have some processes put in place so that we can, I guess, get the full story next time?
Yeah.
I appreciate the comments tonight and some previous emails, but the topic of this property goes back to about two thousand and six or seven, and I believe there was a death in the family, and the Weisiger Trust, who owns multiple mobile home parks in Champaign-Urbana area, were divesting themselves of those ownerships, and I think there's three siblings, if you will, that were the inheritors, if you will, of this property, of these, and early on, we were approached by two attorneys, one representing one sibling, one representing another, the Weisiger family members, and just kind of a casual, hey, would you be interested in this property someday? And, you know, without a whole lot of, yeah, and internal discussions amongst some staff members, our response was, sure, it's adjacent to a public works facility, someday we may have a must, master plan, someday we may build on this very site, it makes sense, it's adjacent to seven oh four Glover, seven oh six Glover. The discussions became more serious over time, and having, I just started with the city during the Lincoln Mobile Home Park situation, and I know what that was all about, and knowing what that was about, I wanted nothing to do with it. Okay? So it was clear in our discussions that if we were to move forward with this purchase, the representatives of the Weisigers would need to relocate, move, what have you, the folks that live there. Okay? We had an appraisal done, we had an environmental assessment done, I know through time, once in a while, I would get calls from realtors that had an interest in buying the property and nothing pursued, you know, and that was fine, if they were going to sell to somebody else, that was fine, we weren't, you know, going to fall on our sword for this piece of land. But over five years of time, they found no other buyers, and our interest was, is essentially a cleared site, we were not interested in going through what you heard tonight. Okay? That was kind of the premise from day one. Over time, I know that our offer was higher than the appraised value, and we were doing that because they said, hey, it's going to take a fair amount of money to help move these people, move the trailers, do this and that. So the offer that we agreed to, one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, includes for them to help folks like what you just heard tonight. So that was the compassion side, if you will, in our negotiations, we weren't, we had no intention to get heavily involved in the moving, it was, I mean, to be clear, you know, to have a cleared site. Okay? That was, that was our intent, we didn't want to get involved with moving nine or ten families. And that was the premise for five years, I realize this just came up now, but quite honestly, we, or I anticipated that five years ago. So if we're back to square one, we're back to square one, but I can tell you that in our negotiations, Jack Waller and I, with representatives of the family, we included some dollars for what we're hearing tonight.
Oh, well, then that should help solve the...
Well, it should, but now whether they decide to do anything to help, I don't know, we don't, we don't cause that to happen. So that wasn't part of, you know, thou shalt do whatever. But anyway, they told us that there were some extra costs involved for what you heard tonight, some of the trailers can't physically be moved, or they're too old, or they won't be accepted, or whatever, so we thought we were trying to have a compassion to do some of that, so.
So you're saying the owner, what we gave, that it wasn't in the contract specifically, that the owner had a obligation to help the tenants relocate?
We didn't demand, we didn't require that, they asked us, could we help more than the appraised value? And we talked it over and we decided, yes, we would do that. So.
Could I have a comment, make a comment, Eric?
Yes, Mr. Roberts.
Yeah. In a way, this conversation is a really difficult one to have because it's really based on public input. We haven't had a real conversation from staff or any kind of study or any kind of, like, ground truthing for some of the details that might be coming up in the future about how we can handle this. Obviously, the City Council has an interest to assist, and I think that's extremely wonderful that Esther Pat took the initiative to respond to the tenants' concerns, she was getting calls from the tenants almost immediately after they received the letters. City Council members have not read those letters yet, even ourselves, I mean, I, I'd like to get a copy of that myself. I think the City Council's really not really versed at this moment to make any kind of decisions, but to gather information is going to be the next step, and I think this could be coming up on future council, council agenda. Attending, I attended the meeting, and so did Mr. Bill Brown, that was held at Lincoln Square with a large percentage of the representatives of that mobile home park, and some very positive things came from it, mainly that they're very interested in working with the city to make that move, they're being, they're very flexible about it. Also, I think for the councils, in our understanding, representatives of the mobile home industry are also willing to participate in making that move less and less harmful to tenants. Now, there may be, I don't know what they're, the motivation may be, well, I don't know, I mean, at least they stepped forward, and we have representatives from the Illinois Manufacturing Housing Association and the Mobile Home Owners Association of Illinois sending representatives from Springfield and Chicago to this meeting to, to say that they know people in the area, and some of their board members and trustees live in Champaign-Urbana, who may be able to facilitate finding new locations. So it may not be entirely up to the city to come to the complete resolution of this issue, we can work on in this in a partnership with people, but as far as a financial assistance, when I looked at the City Council goals, which was mentioned, I did not actually find a specific wording concerning Barnes Mobile Home for assisting. Now, if I may be wrong, I hope I am, but I did read that there, that we, that the city is, is dedicated to assist people in relocations, but it did not mention Barnes Mobile Home Association specifically, and so I think that when we have a conversation about it, at the end of this meeting, we will want to add that language. So, having said that, I think that we need to have more information, and I think it behooves the city to have an opportunity to, to have this as a regular item sometime on our agenda to move forward in a way that we can understand as well.
Ms. Adams.
I think part of the larger framework discussion, I appreciate Mr. Gray giving background, certainly for myself and maybe Mr. Madigan, who were not here five years ago, but actually, we probably should just go back to December and ask staff to provide us the background and do the research necessary for the council to have the information that Ms. Pat provided tonight before we actually make a vote. Because under normal circumstances, if we were to take eminent domain on property of any other sort anywhere else, we would certainly start by talking to the people who own the property. In this case, because they don't own the land, it kind of got switched around where we didn't talk to those people who were on the land prior, but kind of went around, unfortunately, and didn't get the collective work started at the beginning, and therefore putting the council in a position that, learning today, that we've already somewhat paid for relocation assistance in the agreement, but it's not enforceable, right? So we have nothing to work with, and so if they decide not to relocate the families, as the mayor says, she's committed to helping relocate families who are in these situations, but we created it. And so we actually probably should just do the reverse, and anytime we're dealing with acquisition of property, and we talked about this at the Goodyear side and all of those things, we probably should start it, first step first. This is a learning experience for me, certainly, and maybe the other council members have more experience with this, but we probably should never be in a situation like this because these are easy to rectify by starting, like we would start with any other project.
So it sounds to me as though, is, is there, well, let me ask for a, a motion to, to ask staff to bring back a more complete background on this, if, if there is such a motion. Yes, Mr. Roberts?
Well, I guess it's a straw poll or something because it's, since it's not on agenda item, we can't take any action on it right now, but it would be, it would certainly, it would certainly be to behoove the city to have staff bring a information to us and have this as an agenda item in the near future.
Anybody disagree with that?
Question about it, I'm not exactly sure what it is that we're bringing or asking staff to do, since the, it's already been done, is what I'm saying. I know, I know we want to talk about relocation, but we already have a process to help people with relocation, but I think in this case, I'm not even sure what we're asking, what are we asking staff to do, we've already sold the property, you've sent the notice, I'm not sure what we're asking for.
Mayor Pressing?
Well, I think after hearing what Bill says, we have to talk with the owner that we paid the money to and see how they're going to use the money, and we have to work out a plan and talk to the individuals involved. But we're not going to get it done immediately, but it's something that we have to start working on, and we'll bring it back.
We don't do that anymore.
Yeah, I mean, you caught, people bring something to our attention and we take action.
Okay. Okay, any further, okay. Yes, okay, Bill?
I guess the only, the only concern might be if we need to do something in the budget, I guess in the past, the tenant relocation assistance has come out of social services to boost that fund, so if we need to do that, we might have to think about that earlier, but, but we don't really have a budget for it, and I guess I would be of the mind that we could, we could wait a year or so if we need to, to use next year's home and be a landlord if we need to, but, yeah, I think there's just more to find out from the owner and the individual needs from the residents, sounds like it'll be, it won't be one solution, fits all, we'll have to work individually with the residents.
So, Carol, can you take the chair for a moment so I can comment? So, the, so it does seem to me, though, that, I guess one thing that I would like staff to come back with is whether or not one suggestion is going to be followed, and that is to, to give more time for the residents to, I mean, I think, here, there's a suggestion that's been made from a couple of quarters, to give more time for the residents to move so that, so that basically we have more time to plan for assistance. And that sounds, well, yeah, so I, I, I think there's a sense on the council that they would like to hear about that. Okay. Thank you. This, this is the end of the comment cards I have. Ms. Marlin, would you like to say something?
Yes, I'd, I'd actually like to make a statement to the public, so it's not public input, rather than, it'll be my input to the public, if I may. On Friday, May sixteenth, the City of Urbana filed a response to the lawsuit brought against the city by Elizabeth Walden. The city's response included a counterclaim against Ms. Walden and former city comptroller Ron Eldridge. On Monday, May nineteenth, at about two o'clock, Mayor Pressing emailed Urbana City Council members to inform us about this filing. A copy of the court documents was attached to the email. So we received notice of the city's action about the same time the story broke in the press. On Tuesday, May twentieth, I opened my newspaper and was stunned to read the mayor's front page comments on the lawsuit, as well as her opinions about Ms. Walden, and there was also a letter to the editor from the mayor which focused on the plaintiff's husband. Later that morning, the City Council was notified by email that an executive session to update us on this litigation was scheduled and is scheduled for next week, on June second. We've apparently reached a point where the Urbana City Council members seem to be the only people not taught... We've apparently reached a point where the Urbana City Council members seem to be the only people not talking about this lawsuit, and I think the public deserves to know some reasons why. First, over the past few months, several of us have requested an executive session with the lawyers and executive staff to get an update on this suit and to have an explanation of the mounting legal fees. Nothing has been, was scheduled. It's clear now to me that the administration wanted to wait until after the response and countersuit were filed before they met with council members to discuss the case. Second, and probably more importantly, the city attorney, attorney repeatedly has reminded council not to publicly discuss this lawsuit as part of our fiduciary responsibility to the city, and we've respected that request and I think we'll continue to respect that request. However, we're now at a juncture where the council can weigh in on several matters. For starters, we're considering budget allocations for everything, including legal expenses. The Illinois Attorney General specifically has ruled that expenditure of public funds for this lawsuit is a matter of public record and may be discussed in public. Indeed, I think at this point, it must be discussed in public at some point in time, given the level of expenditure and public concern. Also, we're going to be asked to vote on annual staff appointments in the next few weeks. Currently, 28 people are appointed to their jobs each year. The city council can take steps now to make this process more transparent than last year. And the suggestions I'm about to make are among the suggestions that Mr. Jacobson and I had put together last summer where we had some general recommendations for some changes in employee policies that we might consider. So therefore, I'm calling on the mayor to notify the city council in writing of any additions or deletions to the staff appointment list, as well as any changes in job titles or significant changes in job descriptions of appointed officials. I'm also calling on the mayor to please provide the council with a copy of all fiscal year 14 staff appointments for purposes of comparison to fiscal year 15 appointments, so we may have some context and history. Some of the other suggestions that Mr. Jacobson and I had proposed that we discussed, and it was a view to the long term, and these are general, these are general suggestions. We proposed reducing the number of appointed positions to which, to those which report directly to the mayor. The smaller group of appointees would comprise the city's top management team from the executive department plus other department heads and chiefs. This would reduce the number of appointees from 28 to about 10. Coincidentally, this is the number specified in Urbana City Code. The other positions could be reclassified to non-appointed positions. And finally, we proposed implementing some basic job protection policies for the appointed officials, and we recommended conducting a workplace climate survey to identify other opportunities for improvement. We believed that these steps could help establish a more positive and predictable workplace and at least deserved a chance for discussion. The court documents filed last week claim that Urbana City government structure gives the mayor, quote, "unfettered authority," end quote, in the contested issue. And I strongly believe if one has unfettered authority, then one must have unfettered allegiance to acting in the public interest and for the public good. And I think that should be our top priority as we move forward from here. Thank you.
Questions? Okay, Ms. Ammons, could you take the chair? I'd like to make a statement.
Yes, Mr. Jacobson.
In the fiscal year drawing to a close, well over $100,000, perhaps by now close to $200,000, has been spent for outside legal counsel that the city council did not put into the budget. This was spent in pursuit of a litigation strategy, of which the city council was not even informed, let alone asked to concur with. The city council has an obligation to provide reasonable oversight of the expenditure of taxpayer dollars. The council cannot provide reasonable oversight when large amounts of money are not budgeted for, are spent, and all we learn about it is from publicly available documents and newspaper reports. I have an opinion on whether the money has been spent in a reasonable fashion. If I said I didn't have such an opinion, that would be ridiculous because it would make me one of the few people in town who doesn't have an opinion. But my opinion is not fixed because I haven't yet had access to sufficient information on which to base a completely informed opinion. Because frankly, the city council has been kept out of the loop and in the dark. I do have a firm opinion on that. The end run around the council must stop. Next week, we are scheduled to have a closed session with the mayor and the city's legal counsel. At that meeting, I hope and expect that we will have a clear and balanced summary of the filings, claims, and communications pertaining to the Walden litigation. I also hope and expect that we will receive from legal counsel a set of optional strategies to pursue with this, from this point forward, with an estimate of the costs to implement each strategy, the likelihood of success, and the benefits of success versus the costs of failure. I expect the city council to have the opportunity to discuss with the mayor the merits of various possible courses of action going forward. If council input is disregarded, I am fully prepared to move or support a motion to zero out the budget line item for external counsel in the coming fiscal year.
Thank you.
Yes, and Mayor, I think would like to respond.
I would like to point out that the City of Urbana was sued, and we have an obligation to defend the city. And I think we have a difference of opinion. I believe that I am acting in the best interest of the citizens of Urbana. And when someone asks you for, asks the city to pay a large sum of money, I think we have to have a defense. We have to have a good defense. And so I, I only remember being asked once to have a closed session. It was a couple of weeks ago, and I have been planning to have a session with the council, and I was very careful to give the council members the court document that was filed before any discussion was held with the press. So I don't, you may have the perception that we've tried to keep this away from you, but I think there was a, there's a distinction between discussing the case and, you know, trying to hold it from the council. Because I, we've had discussions before. I think you knew what the key issues were. You were informed at our last closed session, and we will have one next week. So I hope we can get all this resolved so we all be on the same page.
Okay. I think this is the end of the public input. And so now the next item on the agenda is a presentation from the Urbana Business Association. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Excuse me. I got so flustered. The next is budget review and presentation for Urbana Public Works.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to break up tonight's Public Works presentation kind of into two parts. One would be highlights of the operational aspect of the Public Works Department. What are the more significant changes? I'd be happy to answer questions along the way. And the second component would be just a highlight of some of the active projects that are going on, which you all should be aware of at this time. This is a snapshot of our Public Works Department during one of our annual department meetings. It was cold outside that day, but this is our mission. I won't read it for the sake of time tonight. But these are the faces behind the 80 or so employees in the Public Works Department. The department is broken up into six divisions: Administration, Arbor, Operations Engineering, Environmental Sustainability, and Equipment Services. All those leaders, division heads are here tonight. If there are questions I can't answer, they're here to assist. Subset of the divisions gets into some of the sections of each division, such as Arbor. There's three sections, et cetera. Again, an overview of our organization. Okay, operational budget highlights. I'll try to be brief. The first item I want to bring to your attention is, over the last few years, we've had greater than budgeted expenses for overtime in the Public Works Department. And also, we have done a survey, and our supervisors, who are salaried, they're exempt employees. We need to come up with a way to look at the considerable amount of hours that they spend for emergencies, emergency responses, or special events. Typically, these are 12-hour events that may happen during the snow season when we're in the snow plowing operations. This past year, we had 11 weekends where these supervisors on Saturdays and Sundays were away from home. There was absolutely zero additional compensation for that. And there's many special events throughout the year, whether they be Fourth of July parades or Sweet Corn, or a few weekends ago, such as the Iliac Festival. Things like that do involve supervisors. Now, we all understand that supervisors are expected to work, you know, the hours to get a job done, whether it's nine hours a day, 10 hours a day, come in early, stay late. That's totally expected. That's totally understood. But we have looked at other agencies. Champaign has a model that we like and would like to implement, and that is, is that when there's 12-hour situations above and beyond the quote-unquote 40-hour work week, we'd like to provide straight hour pay for those individuals. So there's a $10,000 increase in this line item. It's $62,000 budgeted currently. We're looking to go to $72,000. And again, that's to look at compensation for supervisors and also to be more reflective of the typical overtime pay that we've been paying out for the last few years. That's been a fairly flat number for several years. Next, we have a inventory tree annual fee. You may recall, we had a updated tree inventory completed, and we now, we're in the mode of maintaining that inventory. So we're looking at additional annual, not additional, but we're looking at annual expenses for the licensing, for the software, for hardware and peripheral maintenance, to have an active website for anybody to access information about our trees, to continue to maintain the GIS level, if you, layer, if you will, of those trees in the city. And this is a number of around $8,000 per year to maintain the 14,000 tree inventory throughout the city of Urbana. We're looking at reducing some of the utility line items, a lot of the energy efficiency work that we've done throughout the city, this building and other buildings. We're seeing a reduction, particularly electric costs and water costs. Kudos to the Public Facility Maintenance Division and for Scott and his division to come up with ideas in the past. And we see that those reduction in utility expenses will help pay for some of the other items about, which I'm about to talk about. Building repair line items. This is an area that is needed. This past year, I think twice, we came to you with emergency repairs, with HVAC equipment, et cetera. We really need to increase the line item for building repairs so that we can do in a more proactive preventative situation with our HVAC equipment and plumbing repairs and roof repairs, electrical services, overhead doors, appliance repairs, glass repairs, locksmith services, pest control, sewer alarms, sewer services, alarm systems, carpet cleaning, and things of that sort. So we're asking for a $10,000 increase in that line. Public facilities rehab. Again, we have several buildings that we are in charge of, and we'd like to look at a $20,000 increase in this particular line item. Again, each building has a variety of needs, whether it has to do with chiller replacements or elevator improvements, again, HVAC and carpet or upgrading work in town, in the buildings, insulation work. There's a five-page list of items that we would like to get to that right now our budget doesn't allow. Utility reduction costs would help pay for these increases. We'll be going out for bids soon for a custodial contract. You may or may not be aware that we had a previous custodial contract, low bid approved contract that didn't work out. We eventually had to terminate their services via repeated efforts. We right now have an interim custodial contract until we go out for bid again. We know that the second low bidder or other other low bidders were considerably higher than the low bid that we did have. So we're increasing this line item by about $9,000. Hopefully, that will cover the future bid contract for maintaining this and all the other city-related buildings. This last bullet, I think we already had a considerable amount of discussion on. The $113,000 for 610 South Glover, as the mayor reported. Community Development Department and the Public Works Department will come back to you to talk more about what we heard this evening. New projects. We need to replace a leaking roof in the fire department. A budgetary number is $100,000. If you've been in that facility, it has been an ongoing problem for a while. We are recommending that this line item in the BO9 or supplemental budget pay for us going out for bids, getting specifications, going out for bids to replace the fire department roof, which is right next door here. In a similar vein, we have for several years a very dilapidated materials storage shed in the back Public Works garage. Knowing that we're not going to be doing any major replacements of such facilities, we need to upgrade and put a better roof on and a better walls, if you will, of those bins, particularly for the salt storage and other material storage. Right now, we can't keep those materials dry, and this is $40,000 to replace that. And I'd like to put a plug in that Public Works staff would be doing a lot of the labor work. So this $40,000 is mostly for material costs to help give us a better covered shelter of the products that we store on site at 706 Glover. There are unfunded matters. Again, I need to bring to your attention, we have a very old, old work order system. Quite frankly, it's 20 years old, and you'd probably be flabbergasted if you had a software system still being run, but that's what we use. I know that the work order asset management systems of today are much better, much more powerful, would be better to help us, but we can't find the dollars at this juncture to do that. So we continue to use what we have, albeit it's not very effective. Public Works master plan, since 2001, we did a space needs program needs assessment. Since 2001, I've been asking for us to go to the next step for a master plan. It would be great to do it at this juncture. We do not have dollars found or allocated to do this. We do have 1960s Public Works facility. I think most of you have been out there. We are way under in space use. More than half our fleet is parked outside. Our mechanics still work on their backs when they repair equipments. The list goes on. But it would be nice to have a master plan, so at least we know what dollar amount we're doing. And maybe we shouldn't be buying 610 Glover, or maybe we should be if we had such a master plan in place. Lastly, we do not have money budgeted for a programs needs assessment for the rest of the city or a master plan. Because we don't have a specific scope, it's hard to say what that amount would be as far as cost. I have a range here for money. It may be as little as 100,000 and maybe as great as $200,000. But until we sit down with a consultant and work through the plan details, it's impossible to know exactly. But to put a space, a plain, a dollar amount kind of holder to move forward with it, I would recommend $100,000, but that won't be for this year. Now, for the more fun stuff, we're going to talk about construction projects. And this has been quite the year, probably a record year if you look in the archives for Public Works projects. Again, this map, I believe it's online. If you would like a copy, notify me. But this is a snapshot of what is happening in Urbana. And if it looks like there's a lot of colors on the map, you're right. We have a lot of activities, and the ladies and gentlemen behind me are responsible for all this great activity in town. We're nearing completion of the Boneyard Project. Again, TIF money has been funding this. The ICE- The icing will get more clear on the cake in the next four months or so, three, four months, hopefully by Labor Day. We'll have a real great completion here that we could all walk through and have a nice ribbon cutting. Broadway Avenue, we're planting the materials in the parkway. You can see the exaggerated large parkways between the sidewalk and curb and gutter in this aerial. It's a complete street. We're accommodating bicyclists, pedestrians, and vehicles. We have curb bump outs to shorten the distance. It's a great example of what a complete street should look like, ornamental, streetlights, et cetera, and this project is nearing completion. Race Street, also, we finally had some utility poles removed near Silver Creek Restaurant. Hopefully, we'll get those concrete curb and gutter pavement patching done, and we'll get the saw cut loops in the pavement up by Race and University. And for those who use the intersection, I've heard this once, I've heard it many, many times, why are those signals not coordinated? It's because we were waiting for the utility company to get their poles and their overhead lines out of the way, so we can finalize, make the signals fully actuated and in coordination with the other signals in University Avenue. So, our apologies, but that work should be completed very quickly. Airport Road is under construction. I understand they're doing some paving already. It's kind of a three-phased project, one point two million dollars state motor fuel tax, TIF-for-funded. We have a very large resurfacing project this year. Illinois Kohler, Iowa Bucy Race, Washington Broadway are streets that will be milled and resurfaced. We'll be updating the ADA ramps at intersections, replacing some broken curb, et cetera. Hopefully, the, well, the streets should look brand-new when we're done. Florida Fidel Signals are under construction now. We've done the bump outs. Apologize for the lack of accessibility through the intersection. Bear with us. Hopefully, with cooperative weather like we've been having, we'll get the contractor in and get the sidewalks poured and get the signals in shortly. Goodwin and Green work has started in the southeast corner. It's about a nine hundred thousand dollar project. We'll have new street lighting, LED lighting in the intersection. We'll be milling, resurfacing the pavement, new traffic signals. Eighty percent of this project is being funded by a federal program called Transportation Community System Preservation. High cross-road improvements, if you've been out east part of town, that work has started. It's about a seven point seven million dollar construction project. When you throw in engineering fees, it's over eight million dollars. One hundred percent funded by LLI Jobs Now. We hope by December first that most of the work should be completed. There may be some restoration-related work needed at the end of, into next spring, but there will be delays, unfortunately, but we will keep traffic flowing in each direction while the work ensues. Windsor Road, we talked about that tonight a little bit. We hope to go out for bid next month, and enough said for that for now. We will be talking to you soon about a bond sale pretty quickly. We're getting bids on that, is my understanding, so we'll be coming back to you with the bond sale on that shortly.
Can I just ask you a question on the bonds?
Yes.
Is there a FAQ for that bond sale out?
I am not aware of a...
Or RFP or anything?
Oh, I'm sorry, an RFP. I'll let Rich answer that question. I think the answer is yes, but I'll let him answer.
The answer is yes. We released an RFP to several banks last week, and the deadline is next, or is this coming Friday? We're asking for up to two point eight million dollars.
Is it on the city web? Where is the RFP that you released?
We did a direct placement. We contacted several different banks instead of doing a solicitation, broad solicitation, since this is such a narrow scoped project, a smaller-sized project, as we did with Boneyard in the past, a number of banks were identified, and then we were contact, we contacted them and provided them with the RFP.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on that, not necessarily about how the RFP was done, but, so the two point eight million, when this came before, council before, and I was asking questions within the context of the resurfacing program for this year, and should we maybe scale back the resurfacing to generate some savings there to offset the cost of this project? Your staff had indicated that we were looking at, in the ballpark of two, two and a half percent amortization on that, interest rate on that. Doing the math, and hey, I'm in the restaurant business, so maybe I'm not doing my math right, but looking at the capital, the capital plan, the two point eight million, according to my math, if we're going to do a three hundred and twenty thousand dollar payment every year, that comes out to more like five point two-two percent. So, are we just erring on the side of caution there, or what is the, what's the difference?
Yes, we basically wanted to make sure we had enough in the budget to cover whatever the debt service would be required once we got the proposals back.
Okay, so it's quite possibly going to be far less than three hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year debt service?
We would hope it would be less than that, yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Olympian Drive Construction, we're still in the award phase. Technically, the project hasn't been awarded to a contractor yet. We hope that to occur in the weeks, the next few weeks ahead, and in all likelihood, assuming that happens, we may be breaking ground August, September timeframe. Lincoln Avenue, again, just to, although we're not talking construction right now, it could be next fall, 2015. We're still waiting to receive approval from the Federal Highway Administration and the IDOT on the project design report. We need that approval before we can get into the design phase, so that's the current status of Lincoln Avenue. That purplish line is the one-mile stretch where it currently ends by Sailing Court, connecting up to Olympian Drive. Ash Street is under construction. This is a joint cost share with Urbana Park District. This is, if you will, the driveway to one of the park district's garage facilities. They use on a work, every workday basis. It's right off University Avenue, literally across the street of the MTD bus facility, maintenance facility. It's about a two-block stretch, so it's under construction right now. Downtown parking lot, we're nearing the design completion here. We're looking at changing out many, well, all the light fixtures. Eventually, it'll be an LED fixture. In many cases, we'll be just changing the fixture out only. In this particular lot, we'll be upgrading and matching the light fixture types and poles that we have in other areas, downtown areas of Urbana. The first phase, one hundred ninety thousand dollars for motor vehicle parking system fund, would be basically to buy materials. Our crews would do the labor. The second phase would be more intense, it would be more of a contracted project where it gets more involved with other aspects of installing parking lot lighting and controllers and conduit and things of that sort. That would be in Phase Two in a lot like, such as this. Kind of having sidewalk improvements between Country Club Road and Kenyon Road, near a Ward Six business in this area. But anyway, nothing to do with this project, I'll make that statement. Anyway, we know that there are many people that walk to and from this area that does not have sidewalks. It wasn't many years ago, this was actually in the county. It is now incorporated in the city. We recently put streetlights in this area where it was unlit. We now have a project with TIF money to put in a wide sidewalk on the east side and a narrower, I'll call it a side path on the east side, and a five-foot sidewalk on the west side. Someday, we hope to get further north up into the O'Brien Drive Airport Road area, but little segment at a time, as this is costly. Storm sewer repairs, every year, we're doing various work. The utility fee is giving us a more bona fide storm sewer repair and lining capabilities to help avoid flooding flooded areas. Similarly, with sanitary lining, we've had the sewer benefit tax, sanitary benefit tax around for a while, but again, four hundred thousand dollar commitment each year to upgrade our sewers. We already talked about, there's a lot of sewer lining work going on, actually, in the Ellis subdivision area. Bike master plan update, we hope to end the next month. They have it completed, but just kind of a snapshot of how many miles of bike lanes and shared use paths and bike routes we have in town. It's pretty impressive for a city our side, so that's some statistics right there. And here's probably the most fun project of all. Curbana, where we've ordered materials, we're working out final details with the two properties that will be in front of, the Crane Alley Restaurant, a little portion of UVA, and then by Cafeteria and Company. We hope to have the materials in the weeks ahead here, and sometime, hopefully, early June, we might have this assembled by then. Like everything, there's a time it takes to get, to order the product and get them delivered. So, that is my, hopefully, quick enough overview of the Public Works. I want to bring to your attention one item in the budget on page eighty-six, and it is in the Arbor Division, and it's seasonal landscape, and it's oh-six-oh-two, thirty-one-hundred, eleven-oh-four. The twenty-four thousand dollars and change budgeted, I'd like that to be fourteen thousand dollars in fifty-seven, fourteen thousand fifty-seven, or a ten thousand dollar reduction, and I see Rich making a note of it. So, what has happened, actually, if you look at the FTEs, the full-time equivalents we have in the Public Works Department on page seventy-seven, you'll see that there's actually a reduction in FTEs, and it would probably take me fifteen minutes to go through all the changes, but with the various changes of personnel to better meet the demands and needs of the department, we can, we can reduce that seasonal amount. And the main reason why we can do that is we're creating a new full-time landscape technician position, which is reflected on page seventy-seven. So, I'll stop and try to answer questions and have staff help me where I can't answer your questions.
Now, we do have one person who wished to do public input following this presentation, and then we'll move to council questions. So, Reverend Dr. Underwood, you requested to make us address the committee at this time after the Public Works?
Yes, but he just left. I wanted him to clarify, which I want you to clarify, which he said he would do about two or three hours.
So, please speak into the microphone, and I think, well, we can do two things. We could let, yeah, why don't, why don't you please come to the microphone, make your statement, ask your questions, and then, and then, and then we'll, we'll let Mr. Gray respond and let also council ask questions.
Yes, Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, in your report, I wanted you to clarify, right after you said something about the annual sewer, you were talking about the sewer line, and I wanted you to clarify that in your report. And I wanted to know that, did that have anything to do with that two and a half hours that we spent in your office, or is that something different? That two and a half hours that we spent in your office, or is that something different? With that CD that you gave, or is that something different that you talked about tonight?
Sure, go, go for it. Yeah, maybe a period, okay. Phyllis, you're timing this, right?
No, I'm not, uh-uh.
The 2014 construction map does show various sewers throughout the city, and there has been some inspection. Mr. Brad Bennett, Assistant City Engineer, and his staff come up with these locations. And in fact, the sewer on Ellis Drive between Romine and Goodwin is...
I ask you not answering my question, please, sir. I mean, because you know I don't know too much, and my husband is not here. We spent two and a half hours in your office, right?
Correct.
My husband and I, and one other member from the Ellis Drive, and a little bitty five-year-old.
Right, yeah.
And, and as a result of that, there was a CD that I've been, but is that something, is something different than this?
If I could respond, actually, at the request of Alderman Smythe and Hammond, we went and we televised all the unlined sewers. If you look on the map up there, that's Ellis...
So, I'm asking you a question, sir. So, this is something different?
Well, it's for the same area, and we understand your concerns, and, you know, we went through and televised the rest of them.
Oh, okay, so this is something different?
I, I think, if, let me try to catalyze the communication. I think that what Mr. Gray, what the staff is saying is that what they're showing now was an inspection in response to your concerns that you had expressed at that meeting and at other times.
But I just want, what I'm trying to bring out is that, is this something different than what, what we, I mean, is this something different than what, when we went to your office, or you?
Well, this is kind of taking it further. We met, we talked about all the yellow lines that were...
Yes, yes, yes.
All the, the yellow lines up there, those are all the ones that were lined, and we mentioned to you, the ones in the orange and magenta, those were ones that we didn't, you know, we hadn't lined. So, after meeting with you and hearing about the concerns, and also about the concerns of Alderman Smythe and Hammond.
Some of the other people, and some of the other people talk with you about, and you...
Yeah, so we televised the remaining lines.
Okay.
And then what's color-coded up there, as you can see, the, the magenta-colored ones, those are ones we did find defects in, and we'll be lining them as part of the 2014 sewer lining project. The ones that are colored orange, those we televised, but there's no defects that would require any rehab. The pipe's in excellent condition for those. So, but the ones with the magenta, we did find cracks or open joints in them that we wanted to go ahead and rehab. And I'll point out, I don't, we didn't see anything that would have caused a major blockage, but those pipes did have cracks and open joints, so we're going to go ahead and fix those.
But you mentioned Ellis Drive only?
Yeah, and Ellis Drive is the magenta line at the bottom, so that one is getting lined.
So, only?
No, there, you can see there's also a, a section up there, kind of in the northwest corner, that needs to be lined.
And what's the streets? Because, I mean, I'm trying to be positive, you know, because you did a good job. You spent, y'all spent two and a half hours with people from there, and you did a CD, right? That people are looking at now, and I'm trying to say that y'all did a good job in trying to inform some of the people, and I think people sent you emails, one, the former city council member's wife, right? Is that right?
Yeah, we...
And people were concerned, and then there were people with, you sent some brochures, and the people are getting the brochures, and it's going from house to house. So, with that one CD for, to some of the taxpayers, is that right?
Well, the, the CD we sent you that, yeah.
You asked us to do, and you asked me to give it, and so we've been doing that. Yes, and, and then there was some people having a lot of trouble in Ellis, on Ellis Drive, and so apparently, they've been calling, right?
Well, we, we actually haven't had complaints from Ellis Drive. We went out and televised it to see what the condition of the pipe was.
Oh, so y'all just did that on your own initiative? Okay, and because some people...
All out the prompting of Alderman Smythe and Hammond.
Okay, okay. But I just want to say, we weren't sitting around doing nothing and just coming complaining to city council.
No, we appreciate it.
There was some action taking place by citizens and Dr. Ellis. We weren't just coming here, sitting up here, you know, complaining. There were people, acting people, looking at the CD and, and trying to find out, because you didn't spend your time with citizens for naught. And so, I just wanted to come here and say, and apparently, from what I understand, there was something that you can, or the other night?
Well, I think Bill Gray made a presentation, and he talked about the upcoming sewer lining work.
Yeah, that's right, because we were out of time, and people came to us and let them know, us know, you know, what's happening, and that's why I felt that I had to come say something tonight, because some people came to us, my husband and I, who've been coming here, you know, represent self, but them too. And so, that's why I felt that I had to get up here and say something tonight. Okay. Okay, thank you. Now, what were you going to say, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Gray? Were you going to go ahead and, or you wanted him to?
I have nothing more to add.
Okay.
If I could add, I think the relevant thing here is, is that-
Our contract crews will be out working in these two areas. And Brad, do you have approximate timeframe for that, when they'll be there?
I would anticipate somewhere in September and October of 2014, so-
Okay.
So, this year, later this year, September, October of this year, there should be those sewer lining crews, and there'll be, there'll be notification to people about what's happening and all that, right?
Yes.
I think that's right, yeah.
They should receive three notices. The first one, they clean the pipes, the second's when they're getting ready to line, and then the third, after they've lined, let them know it's okay to resume their normal water usage.
So, that, that's great for, you know, because the people are concerned, but we still have some concerns, and just like the urban planning people who are working with the people in Lyman, we want to get some of those people to work with us about some of our concerns, too. And, and we still have some concerns, but we appreciate this, but we, we still have some concerns, and, but we appreciate what's going on here, and I know a lot of the people-
Let's see what this is able to do to help, and then we'll go from there. That's what I'm hoping, I'm hoping that this helps alleviate at least some of the problems.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I did, I did go to the charrette at Lyman, and I did speak to Ms. Libby Tyler, who's on vacation, to put that community into the next planning session for neighborhood survey, because the survey process at Lyman was very detailed, in-depth. It took in also needs that maybe were not sewer needs, but I think they were very well-done, and so Libby says she's going to look at putting that in for the next process, because it is important to get this from a neighborhood, especially when it's an older neighborhood.
Yeah.
So, I appreciate you all continually coming out. It's been a long time for us to work on this, but Brad immediately camered, and we, we was on him to make sure he got that cameraing done, and now we're going to line those sewers, and it should, should give some relief.
And, and the people are continually looking at the information that was provided to us, and it's been going door-to-door, and the calling and all with the brochures, and since the weather is better, and people will be getting, getting those brochures out to-
And people should still call Brad's office.
That's right, and that's why those brochures will be going up.
Call him and let him know.
That's right, and the information will be getting out to people more readily now, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Questions? Questions for Bill?
Yes, so Mr. Smythe has a question, I think, for Bill.
Bill, at the very beginning of your presentation, you talked about projects, items that, that need to be done, the roof, for example, of fire. Some of these things I would have thought were already part of VERF. Is one of the things you're doing, you've talked about putting some additional money in VERF-like account, or, or beefing up, adding more items to VERF that get covered, or what exactly was that proposal for the additional ten or twenty thousand utility savings?
Right, it's, the new projects are what I would call standalone projects funded by BO nine, which is funded from A O nine, which is funded from the general fund. But no, these are other items. I had kind of listed a litany of projects that our facility maintenance people encounter all the time. So, there is lots of work that needs to be done. The facilities aren't getting any younger, so it's a ten thousand dollar increase for building repairs, and twenty thousand dollar increase for public facility rehab. There's a distinction.
So, those are existing line items-
Existing line items, correct.
That just need to be beefed up, okay?
Correct, yes.
To deal with the kind of things, okay? So, the, the roof, though, is not part of VERF, then?
No, we don't have our major facility components really in a VERF. It'd be nice to get to that someday, but we don't have that situation.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, I thought they were, and I would encourage us with the new finance approach to starting, you know, take even bigger picture and try to, try to keep that in. I'm, I, for one, think, you know, we need to be, we've got a budget out of my, a budget line that's zero for building fund, and I think we need to be putting money into a building fund. That would be where you draw for, you know, for facility study, would be from a building fund that, that is getting added to in the same way that you do VERF. So, I think, once we get through various negotiations and, and get some of our long-term financial, financials in order, getting back to the point of, of putting money into building fund and, and dealing with some of these long-term VERF-like items, just needs to be part of that budgeting process.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions, Diane?
Well, I still think the most important unfunded thing is this program and facility needs assessment, especially since we've signed an agreement with MTD that could potentially transform a lot of downtown, including shuffling pieces of the puzzle around-
Yes.
-on our property. So, so I'm still looking for money, but, so I have some questions. The Landscape Recycling Center, we've always said is self-sustaining, but if I'm looking at the budget for this year, where the revenues are projected at six hundred twenty-six thousand and costs are at six seventy-five, which means it's coming close to losing fifty thousand dollars, at least on paper. Is, is there a plan, is that because there's a new Lance attendant added to that budget? Or is there a plan to increase fees, or how?
I'm going to ask Mike or Bruce to come forward and address that question for you.
Okay. It's one of my favorite places, by the way. I just don't want it to lose money.
The fees for the Landscape Recycling Center were adjusted last April, but we haven't had a full season in which to see how that is. Historically, when we've raised fees, we've seen a reduction in our sales of material and tipping for the first year, and then the second year, it's regained, and that's something we don't know yet, so it's kind of like we have to wait and see for that before we can really tell. So, the projections, I think, are conservative in that regard. We're not expecting to lose money. The, in the case that that were to happen, we'd, we'd probably look at our equipment purchases in the future and adjust those to keep from going in the red.
I might add, we, we study, we have a spreadsheet where we look at monthly expenditures and monthly revenues, and we keep a close tab on that, and we have projections with our VERF schedule of how much money we need to set aside each and every year to maintain our VERF schedule, which is our equipment purchases, and we pay for all of our equipment in, in full. The study's showing this year, we have records up through December, we're about sixty thousand dollars in revenue ahead of last year in revenue, and two-thirds of that is from sales material, so that's good. We're not, we're not, those fee increases aren't from disposal, they're a third from disposal, but two-thirds from sales. So, we really want to keep our sales up to help keep our disposal fees or tipping fees, where people have to use the site as low as possible. So, that's kind of working. Our, our, our revenue's really coming from the material that we're selling. We're twelve thousand dollars up as of December in expenditures, so it balances out to about, as of December, about forty thousand dollars in revenue with cash, if you subtract the expenditures, ahead of last year. So, we're looking pretty good. We projected at about a fifty to sixty thousand dollar increase with our restructuring of our fees. So, we're at about forty at half, halfway mark. So, I guess, to make a short story long, if you will, I think we're in good shape right now, to, to be self-sufficient, this again.
Mayor Pressing, or did you, are you done?
I just have one other question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, in the, on page one hundred fourteen, there's a new item that's about two hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars' worth of miscellaneous public works equipment. That looked like a big chunk of money. What, what is that?
Yeah, there should be-
Do you have to spend all of that for equipment?
There, in the past, we would have broken down all about twenty items, but we didn't, we lumped it together, so to answer your question, it involves a trailer, a sprayer, a copier, an equipment truck, a generator, a mower, a copier, a paint machine, I mean, the list goes on, it totals up to two hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars. We can provide the detail breakdown of that two hundred seventy-seven thousand if you'd wish, but it's, it's a bunch of miscellaneous equipment items and VERF that were kind of lumped together rather than individually lined out. So, if it's council pleasure, that you'd like to see that detail, to add up to two seventy-seven, we can provide that to you.
Okay.
Would you like to see that, or?
No, that's, thanks.
Okay. So, it isn't one piece of equipment, it's about twenty items.
Okay.
Okay, Mayor Pressing.
Bill, on page eighty-two, there are two facility master plans. You're talking about a hundred thousand for public works, and then another one for the general, so you're looking at this as two different sep, separate things?
Correct. The public works portion is beyond the public works needs assessment or facility assessment. That's been done, although albeit, it might be good to dust it off a little bit, because it is two thousand and one, but there would be a minor cost. We're really to the point of, of master planning, and that is, you know, do we use the current site, do we go to a different site, do we use the existing building as much as possible, do you demo the whole thing? What are, you look at a variety of options and find the best use of public funds to meet the needs of the department. So, that's the distinction. The, the other departments, it's really a programs needs facility assessment, a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars. A master plan would, would probably be an expense beyond that point. It's kind of the first step, is you need to know, you know, what are the programs, what are those needs from each department, you know, how do we use this facility, do we go further east, you know, and blow it out, do we look at an MTD situation for, like this room could maybe be used with other agencies as a, you know, grand council room, and this space could be reused for some other use. That's one idea, just for an example. That's part of the master planning.
Okay, but we're talking about a minimum of two hundred thousand, because you want one hundred thousand for public works and at least one hundred thousand for everything else.
Correct.
So, it's either two hundred or three hundred thousand, roughly?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's correct, yes.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, Ms. Hammond?
Mr. Gray, I know this is a very difficult question I'm about to ask you, so I'm going to give a disclaimer. But the, the point that consistently is raised is the need for the assessment and master plan. Can you tell me, A, if you needed to consolidate some of this money from other places, where would you take it from so that you could pay for this master's plan to be done, so that we don't continue to kind of move around in the dark on this issue? And I'm speaking not necessarily to both of the plans, right, but definitely to a master plan that addresses the public works issue, seeing that we just have another thing on the sideline there. Where would you take that money from in your existing budget?
Well, I would try not to take it from roads, so I would probably look at perhaps, you know, if there's vacancies with staff, maybe you take a while to fill those positions to try to free up some personnel, salaries, that sort of thing. You know, that's, that's one idea to look at. I would, you know, try to work with the comptroller to see what revenues might be available elsewhere, too. I wouldn't, for the sake of a one-time expense of one or two hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars, that's just a one-time expense, if you will, to, to do that study. I think there would be ways to probably find that money. Typically, we spend maybe ninety-six percent of our budget in any fiscal year isn't given, so there might be revenues left over, unspent, from the previous fiscal year. I don't know, that could be cash carried forward, that might be an opportunity, too.
Okay. Ms., Ms. Marlin, and then Mayor Pressing.
Well, on page one hundred eleven, there's three, it looks like, well, there's a hundred ten thousand dollars budgeted for passenger autos. Do we need to buy cars?
Do we need to buy cars? Typically, dependent if they're admin-type cars, vehicles, they're a minimum life of ten years, sometimes many times longer than ten years, so they're getting pretty worn when they're in that ten, eleven, twelve-years cycle. I know my previous car was eleven, twelve years old at the time, so we, we do a pretty good job in trying to extend the life so they're serviceable for a long time. So, if you, which line item, were you looking at, the minivan, executive three, for example?
No, it's eight oh nine one oh four oh oh. It's passenger auto miscellaneous for a hundred ten thousand. Hmm? Four hundred seventy-seven.
Oh, okay. I will ask Mr. Frederick to give you a little more information on that one.
I, I would just like to say that I've reduced the number of cars since I became mayor. When I get a new department head, they don't get a car, or a new person doesn't get a car, so that's one of the things that we've been reducing over time.
Sure, but sometimes you can squeeze one or two more years out of a car, and if it would allow us to do the master plan and the needs assessment, I'd, I'd rather do the needs assessment for the long-term good of the city and, you know, drive a clunker for one, you know?
Well, we do do that. I mean, just because a vehicle's on a ten-year lifecycle doesn't necessarily mean at ten years, we just dispose of it. I look at them, we look at the mileage, we look at the usage, we look at the type of use that it's used at. Emergency vehicles tend to get better treatment or preferential treatment for replacement, because, you know, the public depends on them versus an admin car like Bill's. I think we bumped two or three times. This is a new way of budgeting for me with Rich, and quite frankly, in the past, we would have identified each vehicle, what it was, I believe in my recollection here. The mayor's car is eleven years old now, it's a two thousand and one, actually, it's thirteen, it's a two thousand and two Prius. It's definitely at the end of its useful life. We have the police department, some of those are like a police department minivan that has well over a hundred thousand miles on it. I'd have, I can get you the exact number of cars, I don't know why in the budget. We've done this, but we've just, this year, lumped them together, and we just call them sedans, or we'll call them dump trucks, and we'll just, there probably is four or five different vehicles that was put in there. You know, all of them, I can guarantee you, are at least ten years old and maybe older than that. You know, and the VERF, what we do, and we may have to look at, at how we track this exactly, say, Bill's car's on a ten-year life cycle, and it's a twenty thousand dollar car, so we put in two thousand a year. We bump it two or three years. I don't know whether we're taking that money out for the, those two or three years that we're extending the life, or whether that two or two thousand dollars is just continually dumping into that fund, even though we're extending the life of the vehicle. I mean, I can give you, if you want, a report on exactly what vehicles are being replaced this fiscal year, the reason they're being replaced, their mileage, how old they are. More than happy to do that, it's just in the budgeting here, for some reason, it's changed, and now we just lump them together and call them vehicles and auto passengers or whatever, and we put all that money together. You follow me?
Yes, sort of.
Wanted to, since Larry is here with me, let you all know that when the budget initial presentation was made, there was discussion, a report graph shown that the Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund will be underwater, if you will, will be in the red in three, four fiscal years from now, and we plan in the weeks ahead, Larry and I, to be meeting with the department heads and the comptroller to look at it in ways as to how we can shore that up, if you will, and Larry has put together- And Larry has put together a host of ideas and thoughts and hopefully in the weeks and months ahead, we'll come back with you with those ideas. But I think we can certainly bridge that gap and, and get to a more, if you will, sustainable revenue side with the expenditure side of, of equipment. But it's going to take a little bit of all of us brainstorming, putting our heads together to make that happen. So I just wanted to let you know, we didn't push that off to decide whatever, we've already are starting to act on it and put some thoughts together.
Yes, Bill?
I guess this would be part of the facility assessment, but has there been any study of just all the properties that Urbana owns and if there are some that we know we won't need that we can sell and use some of that, like the TriStar site, if we decide we don't need that for anything and use that to help fund the facility study? Or is it, would that be part of the study?
Excluding community development-related properties that are purchased and sold and through the grants management program, excluding those properties, the city-owned properties for the most part, and I'm excluding right away now, and that, just to be clear, is pretty much occupied by a city function, whether it's a fire station or a public works garage or city building, that sort of thing. The TriStar is one of those few outliers, if you will, there may be a few others like that. We don't have in the budget money to tear it down or do something with it. It's, it's, it's a facility that I think is beyond rehabilitation because of the problems it has. We've not decided to go sell it or what have you. There were some discussions initially with the school district as possible uses, they had some interest in it. I think for the short term though, their capital dollars are committed to a variety of schools yet. That was a site that maybe could be used for administration site or what have you. But, but those discussions haven't continued on, so there's no evident property owner 700 user. We've talked to our regional plan commission a little bit to see if they had some uses, what have you. We're still open to anyone that may have an interest in it. It's like, we haven't actively promoted it or sold the site, but eventually the building needs to be torn down. I think there's, it's to that point.
Do you think it would be worth anything to a neighboring business or a business that would want to redevelop it?
I guess until you put that sale, for sale sign out, it's hard to know. But I'm not aware of any, I don't know that economic development would, has had any interest in it. I'm not aware of any recent interest in that facility.
Okay, thanks.
Carol, could I ask you to take? So, I don't know, I'm going to sound like an old fuddy-duddy or cheapskate or whatever, but the car that I drove here this evening, the car that I always drive, is a 2000 Ford Didn't buy it new, bought it when it was a late-model used car. It's what I've done really all my life, is don't buy a new car and drive until the wheels turn off. And one of my grandkids was making fun of my car. I said, "Why don't you get a new one?" Actually, one of my kids was, they've started making fun of me. And I said, "Okay, I could go buy a new car, that would be the better part of a year's college tuition for one of the grandkids." So you make choices. Maybe this is unheard of with public dollars, but I don't think you have to buy an absolutely new vehicle and take that big depreciation the first couple of years. And I think that you can drive them safely, if you maintain them, as long as you can get parts. And I wouldn't, and as I suggest this, as I say, I'm not asking us to do any more with the taxpayers' dollars, any more privation for the taxpayers' dollars than I, we do in our family.
And I agree with that. And when we buy a car, a sedan, a standard sedan that supports our staff, we keep them a minimum of 10 years. And like I say, most of them C-12 or 14, depending upon their use. These are also business vehicles. If the vehicle's out of service, that person probably isn't doing his or her job. So our goal is to make sure that our staff is able to do their, their jobs on a daily basis. We have three mechanics, so as the vehicles get older, if you're working on 10, if you're spending 20 or 30% of your time working on 5 or 10% of your fleet, we have 150 vehicles total, it becomes unproductive. So we try to find that, that balance where we're getting as much good use and reliable use out of it and then dumping it. Pickup trucks for one, we keep seven years kind of in frontline service and then we put them into a seasonal fleet to supplement our seasonals and, and other needs. And we do run them till the wheels fall off. I have some setting out back that I can't sell to the public because the frames have rusted out or pieces have come off them and they're, they're unsafe now. And they cost more to repair than what the vehicle is worth. So the second thing on that is what we purchase under state bid. The average person can't buy a car for that. Sedans run about 16,000 for a fully equipped sedan that on the open market would be 22 or 23. So if we were to buy a used car, we wouldn't be able to take advantage of the state pricing that, that they do get.
The state doesn't have a plan for you to buy used cars?
They do the same, same thing we do. They run them until, you know, they're, I know their, their state police vehicles have well over 200,000 miles and...
Okay. Anybody else? Any? Okay. Thanks.
I've asked Deputy Chief Sylvia Morgan to join me at our table and our boss, Cassie Heldman over there, is also here to help guide us through this process. I say help guide us through the process because we at the police department have learned a great deal about the budget process over the past year. And much of that knowledge was a direct result of the work with Rich Henchel. To his credit, he's moved line items to the appropriate locations and in my opinion, has done a great job organizing the budget to make it more workable for us. In fact, Rich has put the onus back on the police department and all the departments within the city to manage the money within their section. I believe that with those changes, next year and in future years, the budget will be much easier to understand. So thank you, Rich, for doing that. As most of you are aware, the mission of the Urbana Police is to enhance the quality of life by working cooperatively with the community. Our entire mission statement and the philosophy of the entire police department has continued to shift even more to further engage with the community. In fact, we just did a presentation at SUNA last week where one of the issues was brought up about the increased number of reports that have been, been being taken in that portion of the city. And someone looked at that as a negative connotation, but I didn't. In fact, increasing reports tell me that the police are engaging more with the police and the police and the citizens are working together to address the problems in that community. So in my opinion, that's a positive thing. And I want that trend to continue. Although every officer is part of that philosophy, a huge amount of that work falls on the shoulders of our patrol division lieutenants, Lieutenant Bob Fitzgerald and Rich Searls. Bob is the commander of our South District and if anyone has attended any of the 19-area neighborhood watch groups or the business meetings or the neighborhood walks or the bike giveaways, they've worked with Bob. The North District is managed by Lieutenant Rich Searls and in addition to all the additional duties, he has taken on the monumental task of maintaining our social media sites. If you didn't know this, I can tell you without hesitation that people will tweet or send other information via social media before actually calling 911. In fact, it's such a growing problem that we're seeing folks actually reporting violent crimes via Twitter instead of using 911 on their phone system. Rich manages that project as well as commanding the multi-jurisdictional emergency response team. Simply put, I have put more work on the, and responsibility on the shoulders of these two guys than anyone else in the police department. Here's the good news, they've handled it masterfully. The bad news is they can't keep up with this pace and still accomplish all of the other management and supervisory responsibilities that are required of them. Although I don't necessarily get buy-in from everybody, I'm a firm believer that change is a good thing and it's necessary to continue to improve, improve the services to our community. One great example of this is the incredible amount of work that Sylvia and the lieutenants put into the development of the performance rating system. This program recognized the needs for officers to get out of their squad cars and into the neighborhoods and businesses and their performance appraisals actually monitor those community contacts and, contacts and recognize the creative efforts officers develop to solve problems in their beats. This proactive community program are increasingly important but increasingly time-consuming. As a result, one of the changes we are requesting for the 2014-15 budget year is to add an additional fourth lieutenant. Historically, the department has created a quote "services division commander" in this category, but over the years, they've removed it to fill other holes in the system. We're actually going to try to readjust the job responsibilities so that we can have district commanders focus more on the needs in their area and task the administrative lieutenant to address the special events function as well as oversee the police services division, which was something that Sylvia has been addressing for the past three years. The funding for this project has been absorbed within the department for this year and Sylvia can speak more to that with respective future needs if necessary. The only other notable change for this fiscal year involves the financial crimes investigator. As noted on this slide, this portion has already, this position has already more than paid for itself. This civilian investigative position allows both uniformed officers and detectives to focus on more violent recurring crimes. The position allows this investigator to concentrate on the time-consuming and complicated arena of financial crimes. In addition to the financial crime void, we identified a very real deficiency in our succession planning involving the evidence technician. John Lockard has done an incredible job as our evidence technician, but he is literally the only person trained in that skill. By creating a position within the criminal investigation division that fully understands the evidence issues and alleviate the responsibilities of having patrol officers address complicated and time-consuming financial crimes, all of these can fit in those voids. In April 2013, the criminal investigations division had a shortage in personnel, so that newly established position was temporarily funded with that shortage. That detective position is now filled, so we need to include this newly created position in this year's budget. That's the extent of our changes for this year. For the most part, the rest of the changes are getting the, the line items in line with, as I explained earlier, with Rich Henchel working with us. As with other departments and certainly is illustrated by this pie chart, personnel issues take up a majority of our budget. In my opinion, you got a great return for your investment in the past year. The employees at the Urbana Police Department have done an incredible job with limited resources and I look forward to working with not only them, but the community members in the upcoming year. With that, we can certainly open it up to questions.
Okay. Any, any questions? Yes, Diane?
Can't get away without some questions. Okay, so I understand you're going to have a fourth lieutenant and one less patrol officer? Is that the plan?
That's...
Now, how will that affect people on, patrol officers on the street and coverage of the city?
Well, I mean, it's certainly going to, we're already stressed, but it's, and it's certainly going to tax them, but I think the opportunity to create that fourth lieutenant is also going to allow the sergeants to, the trickle-down effect in the long run is going to allow the patrol division to continue to do their job without having to do the additional responsibilities that we're tasking them to do now. So in the long run, the service to the community or the 911 calls for services won't be impacted, but it will require the lieutenants to do a little bit more in, in the, in the supervisory arena on a day-to-day level, the sergeants to do a little bit more and to compel the officers to get out of their squad car and do their work as well.
Okay. And is this civilian, the, the financial crimes investigator is a civilian, not a sworn officer, right?
Correct.
Okay. And, and in addition to identity theft, what, what financial crimes were they investigating?
Well, a gamut of financial crimes involving check-writing issues, fraudulent checks, identity theft is, is clearly a big one that's been a problem, opening bank accounts, a lot of different issues involving white-collar crime overall is something that he focuses on.
Okay. And I have one last one. The, the $400,000 increase in police pension costs, is there, is that a one-time thing or are we going to, what, what's behind that?
I'll have to defer to Rich for that.
We mentioned it last week, I think it was, we, we get an actuarial study for both pension, we receive an actuary, we contract for an actuarial study for both pension plans, a fireman's pension and a police pension, and based upon that study, we determine what levy to set for both pension plans and the budget is based upon those actuarial studies.
So, Carol, can you, can you call on me?
Yes, Mr. Jacobson.
So, so does this mean that, did, are your, were your actuarial studies, did they use the same assumptions that were done in previous years or, I'm trying to understand the, the jump up?
I, I believe they were. I didn't actually contract for these, these were already done when I arrived here. I received them, basically copies of them. The same actuary did the studies year over year, it's the same group of people. It may be an issue of how it was budgeted for in the past versus exactly what the study showed or what the levy was set for that, so I'm assuming that the studies were consistent from year to year.
Were any other questions? Mr. Brown?
I know it mentions the, the change in the MetCAD formula, but I see we have the same amount budgeted for next year as we did for this year. Is that because we're assuming we're going to be able to change the state law before next year?
Mayor Pressing?
That's my, my little baby. Yeah, we, I don't know when we're going to get it changed, but it has to change because this is unsustainable. And so the reason it's the same is because we had, we made an agreement with MetCAD that in exchange for the effort to change the state law, we could put our payments, stretch them out over time. The ideal is that we won't have to pay extra because we'd like to get enough money so that everybody will pay less from the city because the revenue that was intended to finance this will be more in line with reality.
Okay. But I think the agreement we made was to stretch out this year's increase and MetCAD already indicated that they were going to plan on increasing again 15% next year, so I'm just pointing out that if we don't get that change, there'll probably be another $40,000 in that figure. But they were projecting an increase year after year of 15% for the next three years, I think, so.
You're right.
Okay. So we'll, so this, this line item is infused with hope. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. So the next, the next agenda item is Urbana Business Association presentation.
My name is Cynthia Chandler and I am with the, I'm the executive director with the Urbana Business Association and joining me I have Matt Cho, Board Chair, and Susan Jepson, the Board Treasurer, as well as a number of our... Jepson, the board treasurer, as well as a number of our board members and staff.
My name is Matt Cho, owner of Colab, a small incubator that's on Main Street.
I'm Susan Jepson, I'm with Reynolds Towing Service, and I'm the treasurer for the UBA.
The current mission of the Urbana Business Association is to promote Urbana as a dynamic place in which to live, work, and do business. The UBA focuses on recruitment, development, and retention of local businesses, the marketing, public relations, and networking of member businesses, as well as special events designed to attract consumers to specific areas within our community. Our existence allows many businesses the opportunity to participate in marketing and advertising that they would not otherwise be able to afford. The UBA is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, member-based organization, and we're guided by a board of directors with three full-time employees and one part-time employee. We're currently reviewing our mission and vision to ensure that it best represents our members and directs more focus onto the businesses. It's the goal of myself and our board of directors to complete this process within this, within this year. Continued focus on membership with efforts to package benefits at various levels and reinvest the revenue into local marketing campaigns has proven successful. In 2013, the UBA membership increased to 172 with 45 new member businesses, and this growth continues at a rate of three to four new members per month. Additionally, 2014 renewals held a 90% retention rate, which is well above the national average of like associations. We had the honor of hosting 32 ribbon cuttings through 2013 and have hosted an additional 11 ribbon cuttings to date in 2014, and this is an example of the growth that has been experienced throughout Urbana this past year. Throughout 2013 and 14 agreement year, the UBA has held Blend of Urbana's, Urbana Blenders, our Magic Motors Holiday Party, and in March of this year, we held the Second Annual Urbana Restaurant Week. We had 18 UBA member businesses participate in the Urbana Sweet Corn Festival, 12 in Urbana Restaurant Week, and nine each in the Holiday Market and the Middle Market. And these outlets provided our member businesses with an additional resource for promotion and broadening their customer base at a reduced cost, which is a benefit of membership. Much of our professional promotional efforts are focused in the free avenues of advertising, namely social media. The use of social media has become a common marketing tool for many businesses, and it's the goal of the UBA to use this tool to the advantage of our members. Since July 1st of 2013, the UBA has experienced tremendous growth in our social media reach. During this time, our followers saw 457 Facebook posts and 2,283 tweets about our member businesses. Utilizing these social media tools allows us, an additional outlet to promote our business members, their services, and events. It also allows for an avenue of communication with members of the community. The UBA is well on its way in the planning of the 39th Annual Urbana Sweet Corn. Our footprint, goals, and objectives remain the same as in years past. We continue to promote community, diversity, and collaboration with various organizations, volunteer groups, and entities such as the City of Urbana and the University of Illinois through this event. In 2013, the UBA met with downtown business owners to hear their concerns and implemented solutions where feasible. This provided a more cohesive environment for all involved. The proceeds used from the Urbana Sweet Corn Festival helped to fund organizational overhead, marketing campaigns, and other events throughout the year. The Holiday Market experienced its best opening day attendance on record and was at vendor capacity four of the seven weeks. The end of the season, excuse me, end of the season survey received a resounding 94% positive feedback. The Middle Market, a once-a-month indoor market bridging the gap between Holiday Market and Market at the Square, returned for its second year. Averaging 30 vendors per week, the brutal cold and snow of the past winter did have a negative impact on average attendance. Regardless, the season ended with a 75% positive feedback on the surveys. The UBA continues to partner with a variety of events, including Celebrate Summer at the Pines, the Tour de CU Urbana Grand Prix, Pygmalion Music Festival, International Beer Tasting and Food Truck Showcase, the Iliac Spring Festival, and CU Folk and Roots Festival. The Urbana App is a free application available on iPhone and Android and serves as a hub for all things Urbana. A person can use this app to see listings of restaurants, nightlife, shopping, art galleries, hotels, and more. This tourism tool puts Urbana businesses in the palm of users' hands. Launched in May of 2013, the Urbana App now has 736 users and experienced 14,966 information searches. The UBA will continue to retain its membership base and recruit new businesses through personal calling efforts. Sustainability will be achieved through the successful implementation of marketing campaigns like Shop, Experience, Know Local that provide value to the business community. The next few months will see the creation of merchant meetings in each of the five business districts throughout Urbana. A pilot merchant meeting will begin in the downtown area. The purpose of these meetings will be to provide a forum for businesses to come together and create a unified voice in addressing concerns and expanding on growth. If this program is successful, it will expand to the other four districts throughout Urbana. The UBA is currently implementing a new event to the downtown area, the Uncork Urbana Wine Festival. In partnership with the Illinois Grape Growers and Ventners Association, this event will take place on Saturday, June 14th from 1:00 to 9:00 p.m., and will feature wines from 10 to 15 vineyards from across the state of Illinois. Common Ground Food Co-op will provide food pairing and cooking demonstrations, and five local bands will provide musical entertainment throughout the day. Expanding on the collaborative efforts of the Sweet Corn Festival, the UBA has discussed a potential partnership with the CU Folk and Roots for this year's event. If successful, it will be expanded upon for future years. Efforts are being made to ensure the success of our downtown businesses during this year's Sweet Corn Festival with an upcoming meeting to discuss the success of last year and potential changes for this year. Led by the City of Urbana, the UBA has assisted in the creation of a new retail shopping and restaurant map. I believe you should each have one in front of you, hot off the presses. This is inviting residents and tourists to discover or rediscover downtown Urbana. This map will be distributed through a variety of outlets, targeting both locals and visitors. As an added benefit of membership for the business leaders and sustainers of the UBA, advertising campaigns will be launched to encourage listeners to shop local and shop Urbana by highlighting these specific businesses. It's the goal of the UBA to bring the focus back to our members. These efforts will be seen both through our changing mission and through our actions. We hope you recognize it's been a very busy and productive year for the UBA. The success of our efforts depends in large part on the work and support of countless volunteers, including our board of directors. I believe the momentum that began in 2004 has and will continue to build. We expect this coming year to produce even greater developments for the City of Urbana and its businesses. For the upcoming agreement year, the Urbana Business Association is not requesting an increase in funding. Instead, our desire is to continue at the current level of funding, as has been in place for the past five years in spite of inflation and other fluctuations within our economy. The UBA is requesting a restructure agreement to include a multi-year term with a performance-based structure. With a three-year agreement, the UBA will offer a gradual reduction of administrative funding annually. It is the goal of the UBA to become a more self-sustaining, and this gradual reduction will move the organization in that direction. We request that organizational funding be subject to performance measures with the city offering matching funds to be capped at a specified amount. Streamlining funding into these two categories provides for cleaner expectations and reporting. Additionally, we are requesting a standalone agreement for the Urbana Sweet Corn Festival that is calendar year-based. We look forward to a year of continued growth and the exciting opportunities that lie ahead. We're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from council members? Yes, Mr. Roberts?
I realize that the Sweet Corn Festival is your main event. It takes a lot of time and effort. Has UBA considered hiring a firm to run it? And I'm wondering if that's like, would just increase problems for you, or would that actually simplify your experience?
That's something that we've actually been giving a lot of, dedicating a lot of discussion to. It's something that we're looking into, and we actually have somebody that is kind of overseeing things for us this year to kind of offer some advice that are event experts. And it's something that we're looking into having outsourcing, still retaining the ownership of the festival, but outsourcing a lot of the heavier duties to an outside firm for next year. And that is partly why we want to separate the Sweet Corn portion of the agreement into a second agreement, a separate agreement.
And can you elucidate a little bit how your partnership with Folk and Roots might evolve? That's something, it's a little bit new, I hadn't heard about that, and it seems intriguing, so would they be contributing to a second stage?
Third stage.
A third stage, okay.
A third stage, yes.
Yeah, Ms. Ammons?
I really liked the little map, first of all. I was at a small business in Urbana a couple days ago, and the owner made me aware of just some really concerns that they have in, I guess, south Urbana. I didn't see in your presentation any focus or work outside of downtown Urbana. And part of her concern was that there was no interest in supporting the businesses outside of downtown Urbana. Can you speak to that?
Well, you know, we're going to be doing this pilot merchant meeting, starting with the downtown area because there are a larger number of businesses in that isolated area, and then we're going to take it to the other areas, so there would certainly be a downtown, you know, a merchant meeting for the southeast Urbana area. And at that time, you know, we can talk about, you know, any kind of concerns that they have and ways we can work together to improve things.
Sure. I also wanted to ask about, unfortunately, she, her business may not be there in a year, which is part of her concern, that they've gotten so little support that they may not survive, and that's quite unfortunate. The other question I was going to ask about is beyond the, the downtown definitely has a lot more businesses in a smaller area, it makes it easier to do the outreach, but what kind of outreach efforts are going to the north part of the community and some of the, I think that the focus on just one segment doesn't say Urbana. And then how much of the work that the UBA is doing is also in connection with the work that's being done by the Champaign County Tourism and by the EDC, and how much overlap is there between all of these organizations?
Well, I can tell you that we're part of a, kind of, I guess you could call it a communications and marketing group, and it's the UBA, the City of Urbana, the Park District, the library, the EDC, I know I'm forgetting people, MTD, 40 North School District, I think that's it. And we meet monthly, and we talk about different types of events or things that we each have going on, but we also feed off of each other, especially through social media. So if we, if the UBA puts something out on social media, for example, if we put out a tweet about Celebrate Summer at the Pines that takes place in southeast Urbana, MTD is going to share that information, the city will share it, the school district shares it. We feed off of each other's outlets, and it spreads that reach to more people. So that's one way that we can, you know, work to help get the word out on other areas of Urbana. Our focus is for all of Urbana, the UBA is, it's not specific just to downtown. It's just that a majority of the business, I would say half of our business members are located in downtown that are part of the UBA, so we tend to do a little bit more. It might come across as appearing that we're doing more for the downtown businesses when it's just that there's more downtown business members of the UBA. But we spend just as much time on other parts of Urbana as we do, you know, we equally promote the different businesses throughout Urbana regardless of where they're located.
Okay. Other questions? Yes, Diane?
How many members do you currently have, and what percentage of the budget does membership, do membership fees constitute?
We currently have 172 members. That's where I was, yeah. It's about one-third of the budget.
And where's the rest of the revenue? The city, the city's contribution is another third?
Yeah, I would say the majority of the revenue comes from events, membership, and the city funding.
And did Sweet Corn make a profit this year? What was the, or last year's Sweet Corn Festival?
It made a profit, yes. I don't remember offhand. I don't have the-
Will we, I know I've been-
I want, yeah, I want to say it's around 15,000, 20,000, but I don't know the number offhand.
And when do we see the proposed budget and agreement?
I believe that's coming to you all next week.
Yeah, so I have to apologize to council. We, the UBA board has been going through some positive changes and revisioning the organization, and came to city staff with a proposal to make a number of changes, as Cynthia outlined in the proposal. And in honoring those changes of where the board's taking the organization, we've had to make significant changes to the structure of the contract, and that's taken a little longer than we would have liked, but we're going to get that to you as soon as possible. And along with that will be the business plan and the budget materials, which Cynthia had actually prepared, but we withheld the memo, so that's our fault as staff, and I apologize. But we did ask UBA staff, and we have, I believe, three other board members in the audience tonight who moved forward with making the presentation today, but you'll receive all the detailed figures soon.
Yeah, Mr. Brown?
So just to make sure I understood what you said, right? You're planning on a three-year program, looking out three years, which I think is great, looking out that far and making plans in advance, and that what we would contribute goes down every year?
Correct.
Sounds good.
Okay. And let's see, did I see Mr. Roberts? Yeah?
Very quick one. Really, I do appreciate what I would call is a very creative rethinking of your own process. The UBA has kind of gone through this kind of amorphous change process over the last couple of years, and it seems like this year there's real potential to pull it into a very fine, more focused mode, so I really appreciate that. We are hearing some kind of interesting, I think, real positive concepts coming out of it. To speak to the importance of the downtown, while all sections of the city are important and people do shop everywhere, the image of any community is found in this downtown, and if the downtown lacks vitality, that's what most people judge the community by. So I certainly support bringing as much vigor and energy into the downtown area as possible. It's really what most newcomers to a city go to first when they experience a town, and then it's to their hotel, wherever that hotel is going to be. So, you know, we certainly want to support all venues and all businesses, but keeping the downtown vital is, I think, a one on the list.
Okay. Other council questions?
Yes, Mr. Smith?
Okay, so you talked about, thank you for the presentation, by the way. It's getting late and running out of steam here. The, you talk about performance-based measures here. What exactly are you going to measure? What are you going to show us next year?
Performance base would be essentially our membership growth. And we would have to bring in enough contributions and membership dues to match or exceed what the city is funding.
Does that, but, okay, so that'd be one thing. But you're also, you have a few more events planned that would, I would think would be part of the measure. It's sort of indirect, you know, indirectly hard to measure revenue brought into the city or, you know, to businesses and such. But I would think that, you know, your involvement in all these other events could somehow be quantified. I'm not sure if Brendan has an answer there.
I can just talk about the process we've gone through to reach the point that we're at, and that is we modeled it somewhat after the Champagne Center Partnerships approach, which was some baseline operating support that declines every year, plus matching funds for dollars raised from memberships, including in-con contributions, because UBA receives substantial, particularly advertising in-con contributions, that they're then able to pass those savings on immediately to their membership. So those are the two categories that the matching portion is attributed to. And then, as we mentioned, the Sweet Corn is separate. And I guess I would note that the UBA board has held two retreats and had a lot of in-depth discussion, and been, I guess, I would say somewhat rushed in making changes of the scale for an organization this size to get to this point. But I think that there is a lot of interest on behalf of the board and the staff to go further to provide more detail. However, to present this in a timely fashion to council, this is more or less the point we've reached, I guess, in terms of the detail we're going to be able to provide prior to your passage of the budget. But I don't think that prohibits more detail on your, on the back end, I guess. Yeah.
Diane?
Well, I was looking in the budget for the UBA contribution from the city, and I'm seeing bits and pieces of it throughout several parts of the budget, and I can't figure out what the total picture is. So where in this budget is the UBA section?
It's spread out across multiple line items, which I don't know off...
Can we fix that?
My guess is probably not this year, but on the city side.
As the treasurer, that's one of the reasons we looked at this contract. We are so confined by how money is spent that we can't always do what needs to be done or what's best for the members. So because, like banners, for instance, I think it's seven or eight thousand dollars, $7,300 goes to banners. And if we can't or don't spend $7,300 on banners, then there's money that we don't, that the UBA doesn't get. So to us, it makes more sense to serve the members better by putting the money into a pot and using it as the UBA feels needed, and then not be confined to different, not have it spread out all over your budget and our budget, and be confined as how it's spent.
Well, I think part of the problem, I remember when, when the contribution to the convention, CBB was ended, the part of the money we were giving to the CBB was then given to the UBA specifically for marketing, or your, the contribution from the city was increased to cover some extra marketing? Is that the case?
Yeah, excuse me a second. I have to intervene because we're approximately one and a half minutes from an automatic adjournment unless we move to extend this...
Move to extend until 11:30.
Second.
In favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Sounds like five to two. Okay, so please, please continue exactly where I interrupted.
None taken. I was just glad I heard the thunder and was able to run to my car and close my sunroof. To answer your question, in looking through the past agreements, there was not an actual increase in funding to the UBA as a result of the change in the reduced funding to the CBB. The only thing that was changed was language. It was changed from, one of the categories was changed from Main Street something, and it was then changed to tourism promotion, I believe. But the title of that category was changed.
But it was a specific dollar amount that was supposed to be spent on tourism promotion, right?
Right.
Of the city dollars?
Right.
Another problem with the current funding is because everything is so specified with the city and the contract, there's no benefits for the employees. So if we had funding and we could raise additional funding, then we could maybe rework our budget to figure out some benefits, to be able to maintain employees longer. So there's things we feel like we can do as a board that we can't do currently because of the strictness of the budget and how the funding comes in.
Other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know what to do except to plow on.
I think we're gonna...
Yes, next item on the budget, or next item on the...
I think we want to make a, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sure, sure. I open to suggestions, yes.
Charlie wants...
Yeah, I'd suggest we take the two items that have people here with respect to them. We have Jackie from the Co-op, which is item number 11. We have the folks from Don Juan Restaurant, number 12 here as well. I'd suggest we take numbers 11 and 12 and then figure out how to do the rest.
Any objection?
I second that.
Okay, hearing no objection, the next item with which we'll deal is Resolution Number 2014-05-032R, Agreement Between the City and Common Ground Co-op.
Hi. I am pinch hitting for Community Development Staff today, although Public Works is very much involved with this project. What you have before you is a agreement with Common Ground Food Co-op, and in the background is Lincoln Square Village Management approving the use of the parking in front of the Common Ground. In this picture here, this is the Common Ground location. More or less in front of their store is about three parking spaces that we are looking at converting into bicycle parking. What would happen is the current existing bicycle parking in the front porch, if you will, would be freed up for other table, chair, and other uses. And we would transfer that and additional parking over here, probably adding up to, if I recall right, 12 spaces. The Common Ground Food Co-op is willing to pay for the cost of a shelter. The shelter that staff and Common Ground have looked at together is a dual-guard parachute model, which looks like this. We feel that it's a handsome-looking type of shelter for bicycles. Public Works crews would do the concrete pouring, foundation pouring, and installation of this bike shelter that would be in the location I just showed here in Exhibit A, in this blue space here. We would also work with Common Ground for a location for a cart, for the grocery carts, in a space, maybe more in this area over here. The agreement is before you, and we would take monies, funding from our Motor Vehicle Parking System Fund to help pay for this. For the labor costs would be a soft cost. The concrete costs would be something we would take in our budget. And would be happy to answer any questions or...
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, quick question. The location, is that chosen because it's the, sort of like the closest without affecting handicap spots?
That is correct. These here are handicap spots right here. So it's relatively close, albeit the front door being more like this, but kind of collective...
It's convenient to the farmer's market on Saturday where we run out of space.
It would be used for farmer's market on Saturday, yes.
Okay. Mr. Roberts?
Yeah. I appreciate, I'm interested in this project. Can, can you tell me what the cost actually is to purchase the parachute cover? I guess that's something, I guess what I'm interested in is knowing what the donation of Common Ground is to this experience.
I'll let Jackie answer.
Yeah.
So this would allow us to triple amount of, amount of bike parking that we currently offer, which is already currently a problem, not only for our customers, but basically our bike parking is the most popular in the area because it's covered. So it's used throughout market and so forth. It's going to cost about $15,000 to purchase this shelter. And it was picked based on what the staff felt was best. We gave them all the options and went with what they felt was acceptable. And we're willing to take on all those costs. So it's about $15,000 investment on Common Ground's part. We'll triple bike parking and be open to the general public. It won't be just for Common Ground.
Thank you.
Other, yes, Diane?
Well, I would move to send Resolution Number 2014-05-032R to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second. Further, Mr. Manigay?
Is there no ability to put this awning up against the building there adjacent to your existing awning? I'm trying to picture it. I drive by it all the time, and now I'm just not picturing like to the, to the south of your existing outdoor seating?
Directly to the south of our, of our awning is some, there's a little bit of space which belongs to Lincoln Square. It's kind of planted, trees and so forth. And then there's a door that's an entrance to Health Alliance.
Right. But between the Health Alliance door and Common Ground, is there not room there?
It would allow for about half the amount of parking because there'd only be entry from one side. This will allow, the way this shelter is built, there's entrance from both sides, so it allows for many more bikes. They don't actually completely fill, completely under the shelter. So we'd lose about half of the, of the amount of spaces.
But the way I see this is there will be parking spaces abutting the structure on the south side. So how does a bicycle enter the south side of that awning with, with cars parked there?
It's just going to enter from the north side. There's a curving here, so it'd be pretty much entering here.
Okay, so then, so then the structure's only allowing entry from one side anyway?
More or less.
It's only allowed on one side, but it can go through enough that there's room for double parking.
Which could happen against the building.
There isn't enough room, I don't believe. I believe, the way the structure is, I believe we would get into access problems in the width of the sidewalk.
Yeah, I don't really have any problem with this. I was just wondering, would it be more convenient to your patrons? Look, an awning is about weather, correct?
Right.
So what you're suggesting here is that somebody's going to be bicycling in the rain to get under an awning, to run from the awning to your wonderful grocery store, which I patronize, in the rain to get their groceries. So I'm just wondering, from a customer perspective, does it make more sense to have it adjacent to the building?
My understanding when speaking with Lincoln Square for the last two years and trying to organize this is that's not an option. That is their space.
Two years, gee, all right. I'll give up.
This is, this, the spaces, the parking lot is owned by the city, but leased by Lincoln Square. It makes things kind of complicated.
Okay, yeah, I was just trying to figure out why in the parking lot and not up against the...
If you bicycle there in the rain, you can make it from the awning to the...
That wasn't an option offered to us by Lincoln Square in our discussions.
You know, when it's parked not under an awning. So we could forego the expanse and just designate some additional, out in the open air, parking out there, too. You know, I mean, what other reason is there for an awning? I mean, I'm trying to figure that out.
The, I mean, in some ways, I could ask some people from the bicycle community to speak to this more. This was under high demand from our customers, and it's the reason why everyone parks on our porch instead of parking all the other wonderful bike parking that's offered in the areas. They want the awning. I'm not completely sure. I am not a bicyclist.
I would venture a guess that they park under your awning because it's right next to your door.
For our customers, yes. But actually, at market time, they pick our parking above all the other bike parking in the area.
Because of shade. And they're going to be at the market at the square for far longer than they would be in your restaurant.
I, possibly. So shade, shade can be an issue. I mean, our staff also uses it in keeping snow off their bike all day. Some of them do bike in the snow. So if it's going to be out there in the rain, you know, if there's rain during part of the day, their bike is covered. So again, I guess the bicyclist community would have to speak to this more. But we've had a high demand for this. This is one of the highest things that our owners wanted with our expansion. And we continue to see bikes actually locked to the fence along Lincoln Square, trying to get closer to our stores. We wanted to be able to triple the offerings. And what we heard from the community is that it needed to be covered to satisfy their demands, their needs.
I'm really not trying to be adversarial here. I'm just trying to understand, you know?
And again, as I said, I think the bike, the bike community could speak to it better. But our understanding was, this is, it needed to be covered to really be, to be, to meet their needs. And we were willing to put that aside in the budget since we heard that so strongly from our owners.
Well, I really appreciate your work on this, and I appreciate your answers to my questions, but I can't be supportive of this.
Okay, other comments or questions? Okay, in favor of, now, we have a motion to send to council with a recommendation for approval. In favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, it, I think, I think the motion passes. So...
Thanks.
And, and next, Ordinance 2014-05-055, Amending Urbana City Code Chapter Three to Increase the Number of Class R1 Liquor Licenses for the Don Juan Mexican Restaurant. Is there a...
Mr. Chairman, as a liquor license holder in the City of Urbana, state law requires me to recuse myself from this issue.
Okay, thank you. Is there a, is there a presentation? Would Mayor Pressing like to...
I don't have a presentation, but we have looked at this and think it's a good idea, so I would recommend it.
Okay. Any other, yes, Mr. Roberts?
I'll just make a motion that, because I do support the businesses on Cunningham Avenue, and I think this is a nice reuse of a business that had changed. University, that's right. And so...
And university.
That's right. And I went past it, yes. And I do, which way was I driving? I don't know. So, so in that regard, I'd like to make a motion that we accept it and send it to council with approval.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, will, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that moves forward to council.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to know from our city attorney whether we can take a bunch of these items and send them to council en masse with no recommendation.
Because you are not adopting these, I believe you could move them on in an omnibus fashion, because we're acting as the committee here. In fact, you aren't the council, you are a committee at, at this meeting.
So, so let me ask council members, is anyone wanting to talk about any specific item here, or can we send all of these to council with no recommendation and get staff reports? I think none of them are, will require much staff report. They've all got good memos. So I would move items number seven, eight, nine, 10, and 13 and 14, which are updated capital improvement plan, local agency agreement with Illinois Department of Transportation for Airport Road, authorizing execution of preliminary construction Airport Road, ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for Airport Road, and ordinance authorizing and entering the third amended and restated in our government agreement for UC2B, and then a motion to approve the city council goals, all to council with no recommendation.
Okay, moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. And nobody opposed? There being no further business before this committee, we stand to turn...
One further thing, you have to vote to bind them in omnibus fashion and then vote to move them forward. And that vote for omnibus fashion requires unanimity.
Thank you. Okay, so...
Okay, so, yeah, so...
So entertain a motion to consider these in omnibus fashion?
That was the first one.
Oh, that was the first motion. Ah ha!
So now the second one is to send this to council.
Okay. Who will move that?
I did.
Charlie did that, and Carol... Charlie did that, and Carol seconded. Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Don't hear any, meeting is adjourned.